There you can see. Half the room.
Yeah, so as you all know, we are wrapping up the community visioning process of comprehensive plan project. And we have our project manager from three J and I used my take here to give an update on where we went through that process and what we were able to get out of it. So. No, yeah, any.
I think we'll need to try to speak up as best we can.
Jen, would you actually be able to share the slides because I was not invited.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, council and my official. Um, yeah, so as Shelly mentioned here to provide an update on a vision say twenty fifty process. Uh, just a little overview of what we've done in the last couple of months and where we're headed. Um, you'll see some of the slides are a repetition of what we covered in the last briefing that I was a part of, which was a couple of months ago. So I just wanted to kind of remind us of what we did and where we went. Um, so quick refresher on our process and the schedule. Uh, the visioning process has been going on for quite some time now, about seven months or so. There's been a lot of work that's happened in the last seven months. Um, we've prepared us background reports and we've really been doing a lot of community outreach engagement. Um, kind of rounding out our key questions here of where are we now and where do we want to go? Um, all of this is going to be feeding into the development of goals and policies for your updated comprehensive plan that we're going to be kicking off in January of twenty twenty three, so coming right up. Um, and that's kind of answering our questions of how do we get there? Uh, and then, yeah, as that leads into your comprehensive plan, which consists of the community wide vision, uh, information from those background reports and the technical work that's happening behind the scenes like your EOA and your HNA. Um, and then goals and policies that are grounded both in those technical documents as well as the community vision. Uh, so we are here, uh, but we are moving into goals and policies come January twenty twenty three. So we're kind of in that transition period. Um, project schedule, I always like to show this and you can kind of see kind of where that community visioning and goal setting is happening now. Um, and as I just mentioned, there's been a lot of technical work happening in the background with your EOA and your HNA. Uh, and then the comp plan update itself is really going to be focused over the next six or seven months starting in January. Um, and then we are slated for that adoption phase to have it probably early fall of next year. Um, all right. So yeah, the purpose of just this presentation is to recap that outreach and engagement that we've done um, over the last six months, but then also even more recently regarding future fest of which I know I see a lot of familiar faces who are at that event. Uh, and then, but maybe maybe most importantly is providing or sharing out the draft vision statement um, for which I know council has already had their eyes on. So we are really thankful for that. Um, but this is just an opportunity to share it more publicly and in a more formal setting. Um, quickly this summer and you'll see that you'll have seen this these slides already, but we did a number of things. We're out at community events. Um, we hosted a number of community conversations with local groups, organizations and committees in Sandy. Uh, we also had an online survey. Um, we went to a variety of different locations and venues where we could meet with Sandy community members. Uh, we were at the high school. Uh, we were at the longest day parkway event. Uh, multiple farmers market as well as Sandy mountain festival. Uh, so really kind of trying to go to where people already gather and 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 get together. Um, some photos of our students uh, kind of working through a visioning uh, session and kind of talking about what they want to see for the future in their community here. Um, of course we had our booth and our Spanish and Latino engagement coordinator Veritas, who helped us connect with the Spanish speaking community in Sandy around the vision process. Um, so that was really fun. Uh, as I said, we had did a lot of community conversations, which are essentially these facilitated discussions uh, with groups um, that meet regularly like the ant farm. Uh, where we can kind of talk about what their big ideas were for the future. Uh, and as I also mentioned, there was a lot of Spanish language outreach that was done as well since and kind of looking at the demographics of the community and noting that there were, um, there's a higher portion of Spanish language speakers in Sandy. Um, so our key question to that visioning process was what did we hear? You know, what makes Sandy special today? Um, as you saw in the last briefing, uh, we got a lot of content and feedback. Uh, we went through the process of reading everything that came to us um, and kind of identifying some of the key terms or key ideas that kept popping out at us. These word clouds are really just generated from all of that feedback. Um, and then the second question or second piece of that visioning content or discussion was what? What about Sandy? Would you like to change for the future? So what do you want to see the future? Um, that really grounded the the conversation that we've been having for the last seven, seven or so months. Um, and yeah, as I said, identifying uh, key themes, oops, key themes and uh, ideas for all of our outreach responses. Uh, I think you've got the whole appendix of all of uh, those responses in the last packet and they were hefty. So that was a lot of work. Uh, and that all kind of culminated into this draft vision statement. Um, that was, you know, pulled out those key themes that we heard from all of that outreach. Um, so I'm going to just read through this draft vision statement. Um, thank you, council for reviewing that draft. I think it was end of August, early September. Um, you'll see that we took your feedback into account and we did make some revisions to that uh, draft vision statement uh, before it was uh, kind of put out to the public uh, for the future best event in September. Um, so yeah, this is kind of our formal acknowledgement of the vision statement. Um, and then we'll take it from there. Uh, so the vision statement is organized. It's six kind of paragraphs. Um, that are going to constitute the six thematic areas of the comprehensive plan. So this is really kind of a framework for the comprehensive plan. Um, and we start with community and culture. So I'll just read through this and then I'll pause. Um, and just, yeah, open it up to any reflections or feedback or thoughts before I move into the next portion of the the presentation. Um, okay, so community and culture. In twenty fifty, Sandy retains its small town feel through celebration of community and place. Downtown Sandy is a clean, walkable and vibrant place to dine, shop and gather. The beautification of downtown showcases public art, honors Sandy's history and celebrates its location as the gateway to Mount Hood. Public amenities and facilities provide places to play, grow and learn for residents of all ages. Sandy supports events like the Sandy Mountain Festival that bring people together and promote a spirit of inclusivity. Nonprofit and volunteer organizations offer meaningful services to the community and provide opportunities for civic engagement. Governance and growth management. In twenty fifty, Sandy is proactive in managing and planning for growth. Sandy is an innovative community that addresses change through thoughtful planning and effective governance. Growth and development are guided by community values, fiscal responsibility and strategic investments and services and infrastructure. Premier fire, police and emergency ser- emergency response services ensure safety for residents. Regulatory tools and practices are consistently updated to address new issues and new development contributes to the expansion of public utilities. Leadership and residents engage with one another in decision making processes. So new opportunities benefit the community while preserving Sandy's small town feel. Parks, trails and natural resources. In twenty fifty, Sandy's natural and scenic landscape is an extension of the community. Clean rivers, healthy trees and wildlife habitats are carefully conserved to promote biodiversity. Forested areas within the city are protected as parks, trails and natural open space. Sandy preserves the unique character and charm of beloved assets like mining memorial park, Tickle Creek and the John Sred, ooh, John Sred viewpoint. Uh, the city continues to develop recreation programs and a diverse and accessible park and trail system that is clean, safe and functional, serving the needs of residents. Natural hazards and resiliency. In twenty fifty, Sandy is resilient in the face of natural hazards. As stewards of clean air, water and land resources for future generations, Sandy guides the design of the built environment to protect, enhance and be integrative natural systems. The threat of wildfire is mitigated through emergency preparedness, education and proactive planning. Sandy collaborates with local agencies, including fire districts, Clackamas County and regional partners to plan for actions that can lessen the impact of natural hazards, ensuring the city and its partners have long term strategies for protecting the community. Housing and economy. In twenty fifty, Sandy is home to desirable neighborhoods and strong workforce. Driving commercial and industrial districts provide balanced employment opportunities at all levels. A variety of businesses meet the needs, the daily needs of residents and contribute to Sandy's sense of place. A strong tourism industry provides opportunities for businesses and supports local economy. Sandy's workers have access to a variety of housing choices that allow residents to move in, move up or age in place, ensuring families can live, work and thrive at Sandy across multiple generations. Balanced housing choices contribute to safe, walkable, family friendly neighborhoods that connect residents to nearby parks, trails, businesses and key destinations. Transportation and infrastructure. Uh, in twenty fifty, Sandy boasts modern and reliable public facilities and services that support carefully planned growth. The city invests in infrastructure that provides clean drinking water, treats wastewater while protecting our watersheds and mitigates the effects of stormwater runoff. The expansion, operation and maintenance of public services is supported through sustainable and balanced funding sources. Sandy Net continues to provide reliable and fast internet service to city's residents. Sandy's transportation system prioritizes safety, connectivity and accessibility with an emphasis on local street connections to reduce reliance on arterial roads such as highways twenty six and two eleven for local trips. Safe and efficient, high quality transit service as well as a network of sidewalks and bike facilities provides an alternative to private automobile use, supporting efficient use of roadways and reducing air pollution and energy use. That was a lot. Um, but thank you. Um, and once again, thank you so much for your review of that draft vision. Uh, we feel so far that, you know, it's it's been resounding uh, with the community. It has been resounding kind of internally in the staff. And so this is an opportunity for us to just, you know, if there are additional thoughts or reflections or modifications to the vision that um, you would like to just share with the project team, I'm happy to kind of take those um, and note them. Um, and also talk a little bit about what this vision means. Uh, you know, it's it's hard to think really high level when a comprehensive plan are these goals and policies that feel a lot more actionable. Um, the vision statement is truly a framework for the comprehensive plan. Uh, it is kind of where we marry community priorities with a lot of the technical data driven work that's happening. Um, like your your TSP, your EOA, your EOA, your HNA. Uh, so we're really kind of filtering the development of goal language and policy language through this community vision and making sure that it aligns with the community vision. Uh, so this is kind of the importance of the vision. Uh, it's really an opportunity to connect a government to people through the visioning process. Uh, there's a lot of relationship building that happened over the last seven months or so. Uh, and so we really hope that the vision is a reflection of the feedback that we got through all of those in depth kind of conversations um, that we've had at various events and community conversations in the online survey. Um, so yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions about it uh, or respond to any feedback or take down any votes or like as it stands right now.
Thank you. Uh, one, I'd say it'd be nice to put it on a time capsule and hold out at.
Yeah, yeah.
Or is this what it looks like?
Yeah.
This is how it's going. Uh, questions, feedback. I'll put it open. Yeah.
Just one, if you go back to your parks and drugs.
Yeah.
Thanks. And when you list out the mine a typical period Jones, I think it would be good to put the Sandy River Park in there as well. Because it's undeveloped now, fifty, twenty years from now. I hope it's it's up there with same plans.
Yeah, excellent. Thanks. So adding the Sandy River.
Is any of these computers unmuted? If somebody wants to pitch in, that's virtual, because I don't think they're in our inner consciousness.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, from the room. Uh, the visions are pretty good. Yeah.
Yeah, there's one other thing. Um, the natural hazards and resiliency, I think that wildfires specifically called out is kind of the only natural uh, hazard that we're facing, but I think something like earthquake could be just devastating. Um, and maybe some others. I know wildfires much more recent. Um, but it feels like it's just being seen without.
I thought the same, the same thought of me and the word that I'm trying to figure out if an earthquake is a natural hazard or a natural disaster. So I wonder about introducing the word disaster alongside hazard. I think a hazard is something that's bad and it's there right now. It has, right. And disaster comes at times.
Yeah, we also got that submerging back around, including other things like earthquake. Um, and we kind of paused on that in that moment just because the kind of focus of a lot of the work that's kind of going to be happening for the complaint has been primarily around wildfires. You know, that has been such a important kind of conversation topic. Uh, but if I I am hearing that it it would be potentially preferable to expand that further. I think just initially our scope was really to kind of elevate the conversation around wildfires specifically in terms of thinking about Sandy's just resiliency and mitigation tactics over the next twenty years or so. Um, but I'm, yeah, certainly open to to kind of naming them more specifically or or adding more.
The um, the county has to. Oh, okay. Do the next step of putting goals and policies together.
Yeah, great question. Um, so your EOA is crunching numbers and your economic development strategy, which I think another firm is doing, is taking those numbers and identifying strategies. So in a perfect world, and I hope that this is going to happen, um, your economic development strategy will be folded directly into the comprehensive plan. Uh, so the goals and policies of that document should be reflected at the comp plan and should constitute that chapter essentially. And the same with the housing needs analysis as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I've just a broad statement. I think in the next twenty five years, when this thing is I muted. Next twenty five years when this is looked at as the end product, there's a lot of things that could be changed. An example to my mind of natural hazards could easily be a disease in our wildlife. Another thing could be that, you know, there are many things that happen uh, that are not described here, but I think as long as we stay them relatively broad. Get too specific, you end up tying yourself down to making sure that a certain park might be involved or not, and we may have many more parks. We may even have less parks or at least different parks.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of things that could be specified here, but I think I would prefer to stay at at least to some degree broader so that we don't.
Is there an example where that where you feel that more specifically in one of the uh, paragraphs, are you always speaking to the natural hazards and resiliency one or?
No, what I saw, what I saw was a tendency for the meeting to get more specific about lots of different things just.
Yeah.
Nothing wrong with what's happened so far. I'm full in agreement with uh, working our way that way. Just, I just caution, too much specificity uh, leads to us trying to figure out how do we resolve that if it didn't happen or if it's wrong in twenty five years.
Yeah, certainly. I appreciate that comment. You know, developing draft vision statements, there's kind of a balance between calling out specific things. So it feels like it is. Uh, you know, it it reflects kind of the the key terms or things that people were actually telling us, like naming certain perks and places um, to just kind of give a more contextual feel to the vision, but then also not being so specific that you suddenly feel like your vision is pigeonholing you into developing goals and policies. So there's kind of an interesting balance to be played in like making it specific enough so it feels place based and it feels like you are reading about Sandy here um, and calling out things that are important to the community. But yeah, as I mentioned, not pigeonholing yourself. Uh, so that is always a struggle.
Great, please.
Yeah, on the slide thirty six, the transportation infrastructure. Um, you really call out Sandy Net continues to provide uh, reliable and fast internet service. I'd like to see something in there. Sandy's um, net continues to provide state of the art, reliable, fast. Because I think the state of the art, I mean, twenty seven years from now. I go back twenty seven years, the internet was just, you know, people are talking about their dial up, you know, these type of things, right? Or, I mean, so we don't know what that will look like, but if you want to keep it on the forefront of that, uh, whatever that may look like, you don't have to define it because we won't know, but at least it's still the forefront state of the art versus just being fast and reliable. Could be something else.
Uh, one thing I wanted to mention for those on virtually, it looks like we're up and running per normal, right? Right? Yes. All right. Good. So you guys should be able to hear us, but more importantly, we can hear you if you want to pitch in during the conversation.
Any other comments or reflections?
I can. Raymond Ford.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so yeah, quick recap of our favorite event, future fest. Uh, a really sincere thank you to all uh, counselors that participated came to future fest uh, in September, mid September it was. Um, and also to our planning commission members who not only arrived, but attended, but they also stacked stations and were part of uh, kind of the one on one conversations that were happening that evening. Um, we thought just as a team that felt really successful um, for a couple of reasons. Um, I think the, so yeah, this was on September nineteen twenty, thank you. Um, at the Whipper Snappers Kids Play Place, which I will say is an incredible small business here in Sandy, and I've never had the opportunity to kind of uh, design a community event at a space like that um, with such a willing business owner. Um, so really a testament to your business community here. Uh, he offered up his space free of charge uh, for the entire community until about nine PM that night. Um, free food and folks could order beer at the bar if they wanted to and let their kids run uh, while they had more adult conversations um, about Sandy's future. So I really think this is kind of a really awesome, awesome event that uh, lifted a lot of uh, the conversation of the vision. Uh, so it was an opportunity for us to report out the vision statement that I just read to you and kind of get people's initial feedback on that. But more than anything, it was really to start talking about what um, what are the big ideas uh, for helping move the needle so that we can achieve this vision. Um, and so those big ideas, we got a lot of really interesting feedback. It's it's both an opportunity, as I mentioned earlier, like to to relation, to build relationships um, and talk about what this vision means and what we could be doing for the future. And then also to really gather and brainstorm ideas from folks about how they, how they see us getting to where we want to be. Um, so we're really excited to kind of delve into the feedback that we got. Um, similar to how we created the vision statement, um, the feedback that we got at future fest will help inform the development of goals, um, which will once again kind of further frame down uh, the development of policies come January. Uh, so that was, uh, yeah, just got some photos up here for anyone who wasn't able to attend. Uh, lots of kids uh, showed up, which was really fun. So it was pretty active night. Um, we had stations kind of all around the room uh, that were either manned by a volunteer community advisory committee um, or staff or our planning commission members. Um, and we also had some volunteer folks to take notes of the conversation on flip charts. Uh, we also had the TSP project was uh, on board that night and had some additional information and maps at their station. And we also had the economic development strategy team that was there and had some additional information around economic development strategies. Um, so it was kind of an all inclusive event, uh, your one stop shop for understanding what's happening in Sandy today. Uh, it was great that there were some staff available too to answer questions. I feel like I had a number of more personal interactions of people coming in looking pretty confused uh, and then leaving the evening uh, feeling rather relaxed and also uh, kind of, yeah, just had enjoyed the conversations and the things that they had learned. Uh, so that was really positive uh, reflection on on that evening. Um, yeah, I'd be happy to take any questions about future fest or if anybody had any thoughts or reflections or curious to hear how you thought it went and if you had any interesting conversations that you wanted to share with the the group or.
I just thought it was great. Uh, you know, there was a lot of community out there. You mentioned Hans and those folks that were for snappers opening up. Uh, the stations were well done and and very lively, good communication. Good job.
I'd never been there before.
Yeah.
And it was, it would seem like a really smart place to have a community event. So parents have.
And it was free. Yeah, yeah, it was pretty great. I know, you know, it's it's always a struggle with any, you know, hosting a community event is can be difficult when you have childcare and, you know, dinner, it's middle of dinner time and you want to, you know, be a common sense of people's work schedules. So these are always kind of hard to to pull off sometimes. Um, so the ability to have food and have childcare on site.
Uh, so when you say, sorry, interrupt, but so when you say free, do you mean for our community members or for our city? Like, we didn't have to take on any charge for.
For the community members.
Yeah.
We got for it.
Yeah, we did pay for it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was gonna say, that's crazy over.
Hans to give us a significant discount.
Yeah.
Um, um, but yeah, we paid for.
Very cool, cool. As we said, it's great. Yeah, well, okay.
Like, Hans, great.
Well, I really feel like I needed to call him. That was kind of my next comment. I was like, wow, Hans, holy smite.
He's part of our economics.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Most faithful member.
Yeah.
Uh, so as a project team, you know, we'll, we are going to think more about what our engagement looks like for the comprehensive plan process. Um, maybe I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but kind of our next step is as a team, we're actually meeting next Monday to kind of talk through the timeline of the process, the iterative process we're building for the cop plan. Um, and kind of what our key engagement touch points will be, both with you as council and then also the broader community. Um, but this was a really kind of good run for us, uh, just understanding how how we can do well or like run, run good community events. So hoping to continue that practice for the rest of the plan. Um, I'm sorry, I have a slide up here. These are just some, some very broad bullets of like the key ideas that came or those big ideas that were noted on the flip charts um, for each of those uh, stations. Um, I think a lot of the sentiment that's bulleted out is actually kind of reflective already in the vision statement. Um, but the more specific comments about particular places or intersections or, you know, what have you are all in the appendix of that uh, feature fest summary that's part of your packets. Um, so I do encourage you to flip through that if um, you are so inclined to read some of the raw notes there from the flip charts. Yeah, so I did jump ahead, but what is next? Um, so the next day, the next kind of uh, activity is developing goal statements um, based on feedback we got at future fest, based on some conversations we're going to be having with the community advisory committee. Um, and then we can have conversations with you around those and then we're going to kind of jump directly into, uh, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to have a CUC meeting at on November thirtieth where we're going to give them a fairly similar presentation, kind of recap future fest, go through the comments that we got and the feedback that we got on those flip charts. Um, and then start drafting some goal statements that are going to reflect both the vision statement, but then also act as the bridge to the cop policy concepts and kind of the organization of the policy concepts of the cop plan. Um, kind of alongside that, um, you know, as you know, through the RFP process and the scoping process, um, natural hazards was flagged as a really important kind of topic to be to really delve into through this cop plan process. Um, so we actually have kind of another sub consultant called the Gagos Institute. Um, and they do a lot of uh, natural hazard, resiliency, policy and strategy development. Um, and so part of this process is going to be, we're hosting some uh, a series of two stakeholder workshops over the course of the next six months or so um, to talk about natural hazards specifically within the city of Sandy. Um, and that those workshops, the first one is going to happen in early December and that's yet another input uh, for the cop plan uh, plan, for the cop plan document itself for the natural hazards chapter. Um, so we're looking forward to kicking that off in December and then there will be a second one uh, next spring kind of right around where we're going to be starting to think about policy concepts for that chapter. Um, they're going to be also kind of helping us work through those strategies. Uh, and yeah, in next spring, we're going to try to line it up so it it's happens right at the same time. Uh, and yeah, so policy development for those themes is going to start in January twenty twenty three. And yeah, as I mentioned, we are working as a project team to figure out what that process is um, in terms of developing concepts, drafting language, showing it with you for review and feedback, going to our CUC and sharing it with them um, and kind of, you know, creating some iterative uh, drafting of the language that we can kind of work through each chapter or. so that we can kind of work through each chapter or walk uh kind of one after the other. So that when it comes down to, when it comes time to the adoption process, you will have seen everything. Um, and it won't be like all brand new and you have to spend the entire time seeking through all of that. So we're really hoping to kind of do this in lockstep with all of you um and and working through the development of those concepts and and coming to you with the recommendations that we've put together based on internal staff and stakeholder communications and the CAC communications. And yeah, just working, working through that process. So the details have yet to be exactly figured out and we have to kind of iron out our timelines and yeah, make sure it all fits, fits together. But there's quite a bit of work ahead of us in the next seven months or so.
Thank you. And believe it or not, this is a pretty opinionated group. And I think uh some of the lack of sharing really is a reflection on the great work that you're doing. And you, you know, I really think you are capturing the vision of the community. And it's a lot of the stuff that I'm hearing from our neighbors, it's we're out and about talking. So thank you for all your work on this.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it. Oh, projects get, I always put this in case anyone needs to know, but nothing, nothing different from the last time I did this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Regina. Thank you.
All right, moving ahead with our work session, we have our transportation system plans update.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, I do, I do a short.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I'll ju, I'll just open this up by saying I'm going to mainly rely on Ria uh with the cast associates, who's our consultant on this project. So this is basically picking up from last, I believe it was December. The project, the TSP was kind of put on a hiatus for about seven or eight months while we could update, or maybe six months. I don't remember exactly. Way too long, but basically it was put on a hiatus because our grant through the TGM ran out. And so ODOT did us a solid and said, we'll continue to fund this project, but it has to come under a new contract. Be reviewed by the Department of Justice and everything else. So that took about seven months for that entire thing to be worked out. I know, but here we are today and so we're moving again on the project. It's been a project that I believe has been going on for like way too long as well, two to three years. And we're at a decision point tonight in the process of looking through some project lists and getting input from those. So I'll just turn it over to you, Ria.
Thanks, Kelly.
Appreciate it.
First time.
One other thing I will share while, while during that is John Replinger, our previous uh city transportation engineer. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with this. He retired in April. And so he was our transportation engineer with David Evans and Associates prior to becoming his own consultant. And so we were losing him and the great benefit of the ODOT project kind of taking a while is we selected through a consult, through RFQ process, DCAST is also now our transportation engineer. So.
Thanks, everyone. Ready to jump in? All right. So yeah, as Kelly mentioned, so we had our first work session back in December of twenty twenty one. I don't really feel like it was almost a year ago, but. I'm flies. Um, and I know I need to be done by seven thirty tonight, so I'm going to try to keep my presentation pretty short. So half of the time is just going to be discussion and a back and forth. Make sure that everybody gets, gets a little bit of time tonight. Yeah, and I just wanted to show the project schedule, just as a little update. So in September, um, we have put together a draft transportation system plan project list. We shared that at Future Fest. We were one of the stations that were there. We were in the back with the kids where it was really loud, but it was good. We had some really good conversations there that night. And then on October, we had an advisory committee meeting to go over that and be received input from them. We also had an online survey that was up for about three weeks where we asked the community some input on that draft project list as well. And then here we are in November, we're having a joint session with you. And then once we are done with our conversation tonight, we will be taking all of that input and we will be putting together the draft document. Um, and then from that, you will see me again. We will go over the document in January. It'll be your last chance prior to hearings to submit, you know, questions and comments and have a good conversation about that. And then we're hoping um February and March, depending on how many hearings we have, right? Because we will go to planning commission and we will go to city council. This could maybe go past March. I think this is kind of a positive hopeful wishful thinking scheduled and it might go into April. But that's just a little layout of where we are today, where we've been and where we're going to go. So let's jump in. So first I wanted to provide you summary of the public input that I think is important tonight to have kind of in the back of your mind while we're discussing what some of the community priorities for transportation will be. Um, so back in September twenty twenty one, we had our first community survey and it was very successful. We had over four hundred people respond to that online. So that was great. And then last month in October, we had a second community survey. There, we only got twenty-two responses, which is a bit disappointing. I know the city worked really hard to put it out on Facebook and kind of get the word around. It was a much more in-depth survey just because we're at a more complex part of our process where we're asking really detailed questions. For the, some of the questions before were a little bit, you know, open-ended, more like the visioning that you guys are doing for a cop plan. So it could be, and I see this often when we do TSPs, that we don't get as much response because it is getting more complicated. But then I think to offset that, we got over a hundred people coming to talk to us at Future Fest, and I think that was great. Way more valuable information, I think, came out of that than just our online survey. So I think the two combined together. We have a pretty broad a broad input across the community. I think that's going to be really helpful. I will quickly recap just some of it, like I said, that I think is important to consider tonight. So from that first community service that we had online, now one of the questions we asked is pretty simple. What type of issues or what type of issue is most important to address in the TSP? And you can see kind of where they landed in their voting. Congestion was the highest and then right behind it, safety. And then quite a bit behind those was livability, then funding, and then connectivity. So um, these are all taken into account when we were developing our project list and the prioritization that we're going to be presenting to you guys tonight. Another question we asked is what modes of travel are most important to address? Again, driving was the top there and then a bit behind it, walking. And then it jumped down to transit and then biking and then freight. So again, those are what the community is telling us are their modal priorities, kind of their hierarchy of how they like, how they need to get around.
Transit means bus.
Oh, yeah, or here it's bus. Yeah, but you also have like dial-a-ride at Sam, those types.
And freight would be a commercial truck.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It could be from local deliveries, Amazon's, come to your house, anything.
That's.
Um, and then the community survey, number two, that we did last month, we had asked them to list their highest priority projects. In online, we had the draft transportation system plan project list. And there were actually like four different ones because they're by mode. And then there were also the maps that went with it. So it did take a bit of homework to go through and look at all of those. Um, so based on the twenty-two response that we got, the top projects were the US twenty-six bypass. And then also some of the Barco Road, Highway two eleven, cross section improvements. And then for the number two spot for priority projects was uh some southwestern connectivity improvements. And I'll show these to you guys later, but there are some collectors in the southwest portion of town that we have planned. And then the, the second of the top two priority projects was Highway two eleven, minor arterial cross-section improvements. You know, the new piece of two eleven that you guys have taken jurisdiction over from, from ODOT. There's a project to improve that. And then the top three priority project, the US twenty-six bypass popped up there as well. So. And then another question we asked is, is there anything missing? Is there something that, you know, you would like to see that we don't have? Um, and two projects were proposed. One is a trail connection in southeast part of town. That would be a loop um on three sixty-second, Highway two eleven, and then connecting down to the trajectory trail. And then there was also a comment about adding traffic calming onto Barker Road, east of Highway two eleven.
Is that Carl?
I do not take names. And then I'll quickly go over, over this, but at Future Fest, we asked for feedback and then we asked for new ideas. And then we wrote these down on, on the flip chart. So feedback, um, actually, this was probably the number one comment I heard. Everybody really likes the three sixty-second extension and the Bell extension. That'll go over. We also had shown that night, not, not a project, but the city is also going to update the local street cross-section to be a little bit wider. People are big fans of that. They feel like new roads are a little too narrow. So that was popular. Some comments about having more reliable bus service at night. Comments about Highway two eleven at the Barco Road being difficult to walk across. Someone had commented they didn't like Project D twenty-one A, which is a collector kind of in the southwest portion of town because it was near their property. Um, and then some comments about just public transit. They want more frequent service.
Yeah, Jordan, Jeff, let's flag that for one of our Wednesdays with Andy on the, the night. I'd like to explore that more.
And then ideas, there's quite a few, you know, I'll go through these pretty quick, but uh speed reductions on Block Road, Highway two eleven, three sixty-second to twenty-five miles an hour. They, they were pretty aggressive with the drop in speed, posted fee limit. Um, also, they would like more speed limit enforcement downtown. Someone had mentioned that we should have red light ready cameras downtown, you know, they give you a ticket when you run the red light. A long conversation about that um to improve safety and increase revenue. Connect the new three sixty-second extension and Bell Road project up to Kelso to the north. Yeah, so um, a couple of people had mentioned some sidewalk infill on three sixty-second near the trail and the bridge, you know, down to the south. A sidewalk crossing particular street trail on Barco, east of Melissa. So yeah, I remember talking to that guy. It was a very specific connection. Kids go and have to walk on the street. So.
I love that. I remember, I remember talking to that guy.
I do. Um, adding sidewalks on Highway two eleven, came up a couple of times. Again, expanding Sam Transit Service, oh, to Boring and to Southeast Russia, they would like to have worse expanded expansion of the location of the routes. Um, applying a truck weight limit on Block Road. I do remember talking to that lady that lives on Block Road and she feels there's just two, the trucks that are going there, they're too frequent and they are too big.
It wasn't me.
Carl, you have something like that, right? Your road, but. Give another road like.
Installing a digital speed sign on Block Road between the viewpoint and North City Limits. That might have been the same person. You know, the driver feedback signs out of flash and like, you know, that's your goal. And then lastly, adding free public parking, parking lot downtown, which you do have. So that could just be maybe, yeah, you need some PR.
Put it on one of those visual sites.
All right, so let's jump in into what I need from you guys tonight. So no surprise, there isn't funding shortfall. So the total projects, total of all the projects are six hundred and ninety-seven million dollars. Uh, I will say the bypass is three hundred and ninety million of that.
So I, I have a question about that because bypass study I just read, I mean, a couple of weeks ago was nine hundred and seventy-five million.
Yeah, that's almost a billion. So right now, I'm just talking twenty, like current dollars.
Right.
That number is when you, if you went and build it twenty, thirty years from now. So that has like a, a future cost escalation, escalation applied to it. But if we built it today, so right now, all the money we're talking about is in, in current dollars.
But to that point, we're not even prepared to build it today. So it doesn't.
True, yeah, but I'm just trying to keep apples down in this math, but yes.
Yeah.
And then just the high priority projects that are in the TSP are fifty-six point seven million. And based on our twenty-year forecast of money that we know you're going to get from gas packs, from transportation system development charges. From the possibility of some grants, you know, all of that, and then all of your expenditures on maintenance, all that. We're estimating there's going to be ten to eleven million dollars available in the next twenty years. So that's really the homework. We are required by the state to have what we call a financially constrained project list in the TSP. And what that simply means is, and the TSP will have all of your projects, but we have to put them in either the financial constraint list, which is what can reasonably be funded and constructed in the next twenty years. Everything else we really want to have, but it's on what we call an aspirational list. Now, I will say this is kind of a crystal ball, right? We don't know what's going to happen the next twenty years. This is what we're forecasting for the money. Things change just because a project is on the financial constraint list. Again, right now, with our best guess and with the information we have is it'll be, it'll be complete in twenty years, but it may not be. And the flip side is, just because a project is on the aspirational list, that doesn't mean Kelly's not going to go write some amazing grant and get money for it. And if it's on the financially constrained list, it'll get done. So there is, I, I've seen it, you know, I've been, I've done TSPs that are almost twenty years old now. And there's a, projects will flip back and forth. I think it depends. And when you do updates, she'll do some semi-opted updates. Things that get built come off, some things may get done by a developer. You don't know what developer is going to come in, build a collector. That's part of their big piece of property that could easily be on the aspirational list, but because development happens, it gets done. So that makes sense.
Just be prepared to toggle back and forth.
I think it's important to have, again, this is the best information we have right now, but we also need some flexibility. So you do need to have a financial constraint project list. It's important to get as close as you can to what your top priorities are. That's what the city is going to be going after, right? For money, it helps ODOT know, oh, these are what are important to the city on the highway. But it's not black and white. It's, we are going to draw a line that you make it on the list or you don't with the projects. Like I said, being flexible is also good.
So the question, and mainly on the bypass, is to the point you're talking about with like Kelly, right? Like if he was to go out and get some grant, he's never going to go get the bypass grant, but just that being an example. A lot of times, we're going to have to show an investment on our side to be able to leverage and go get that, right? So like, how do we reflect that best in our, in our prioritization where, you know, like we would never be in a place where we're going to fully fund the bypass. But we may have to put a certain portion of our, you know, TSP money to go towards that, to leverage it, to go get additional outside dollars. Does that make sense?
Two things, yeah. One, um, whenever you fill out a grant application, one of the questions will be, is this project in an adopted plan? And you'll be able to say, yes, right? So that's really important. But the second thing is, and we'll get to that, on the financial constraint project list, we have put aside a million dollars for the next phase to keep moving the bypass forward, starting to do alternatives analysis, you know, any sort of engineering that needs to happen. Water, you know, I mean, it's a huge ordeal, but um from the direction from this group. Last time we met, yeah, we pushed that money into the financial constraint. So at least we can keep that conversation moving. Yeah, and it could be match money, right? I don't know what, how that million dollars would get used, but we wanted to make it clear with that. Um, so I just wanted to go over the prioritization process a little bit, and I'm backing up to something we probably did a year or two ago. But we start with a vision, you know, Anice just talked about the, the plan and the transportation vision. We have goals that we worked through. Those are these on the right, one through nine, that we look at. And then each of those, we have some pretty detailed evaluation criteria that we fly to each project to say, hey, this sidewalk infill project, does it help mobility and connectivity? Yes. And does it help, you know, and we kind of go through the list of all the evaluation criteria and we actually have a giant spreadsheet with numbers. And at the end, it helps us rank. How, how does this project help support the goals? How much benefit are we getting out of it to achieve our goals? And then we add those up. And then that's how we come up with this initial high, medium and low priority project. So we've gone through that. Um, and that's how we've come with some high priority projects. And we also just want to make sure, and I have a little list here. We're always focused on system efficiency and management first. That helps us maximize the funds that are available, right? We have a funding shortfall. So we want to be very mindful of that. Uh, we also want to make sure that we're minimizing input, the impacts either to the natural or built environment. That's also a cost thing. We want to make sure that we're balancing these investments across all the modes of travel. So it's a little bit of a balance um in where that ten to eleven million dollars is going to go. So we're trying to get the most bang for our buck for the eleven million dollars that we think we're going to be able to spend the next twenty years. That's what we're trying to do. So. Yeah.
Who's we?
Oh, we.
We're trying to get the most bang for our buck. We is.
Every, the people in this room that are making this decision to develop the transportation system.
Just clarify.
Oh, yeah, we, everybody in this room. So this, the Royal.
Very good.
So quick map, right? So quick map right here, um, we have a draft financially constrained project list. It was in the packet that you guys received. This is just the graphical map that shows where they are, and I am going to go through them. But a real quick look here, um, safety projects are for both.
So I have a question before we start.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Cause the thing that just grabbed me quite a bit and gets to the we, um, is that, you know, some of these projects are really ODOT projects. And some of them seem to rely a huge amount on s- the stuff being done for the Cedar Ridge and the Sandy Grade School and stuff like that. Safe routes to schools stuff. And how, and, and how much, um, buy-in, and by buy-in, I mean actually, you know, money, um, are ODOT and Safe Routes to Schools and the school district willing to throw in to help on this? Is my first question. The second question is, I'm concerned that we've just, you know, spent the, you know, eleven million dollars on the belt three sixty second thing, which is a great thing, but our road maintenance fund is completely depleted now. Does, have we set aside money to re, to, um, take care of the road maintenance needs before we scoop off this ten million dollars?
So I'm too much, I'm going to answer those in the opposite direction.
Okay.
That order that goes. So the eleven million dollars that we believe will be available is after the twenty years of maintenance has been taken. Yeah. So, and that, it's maintenance, it's expensive, it's all the expenditures that the city has for transportation and staff, maintenance staff and all of that. So that's extracted, extracted out first. So yes, you got to maintain your roads first. Um, and then the other question would be.
Just like the ODOT.
Oh, yeah. So ODOT, and I don't know if I'm going to have to think of the number, but ODOT let us know that, and they do this for every city that does a TSB. In the next twenty years, you are likely to get this much money to spend on, in your jurisdiction, based on the level of the facility that you have, the amount of vehicles that you get, things like that. You can't, I'm sorry, I, I go to my last slide, I think I have it. But it's a couple of million dollars. So the eleven includes a couple of million dollars that ODOT has said, promises, but this is likely the amount that you would have to spend on the ODOT facility. So that's included in there too.
Is that restricted to their?
Well.
ODOT, like highway twenty six?
Honestly, they don't want to spend money off theirs. So we've tried to kind of keep it aligned, right? But it's still a little fuzzy too.
It'll cover part of the cycle.
Well, obviously they're not, but it's pretty easy to spend money if it goes twenty six.
Right. We know we have a sidewalk.
Yeah, exactly. So, um, but I also was going to add this, all of those safer after school projects, we included in the financially constrained project list. And maybe that's why Kelly walked up here is those are all, um, part of a safer after school grant that I know the city applied to before, barely didn't win, and Kelly is planning on resubmitting, feeling very confident that they will win the grant. So right now we're showing them as financially constrained, but we can't show them as funded if you haven't won the grant yet. But in all likelihood, TSB will get adopted, you'll win the grant. And then now we'll bring up some more money that could go to another project.
Those all take road fund grants.
Yeah, there's a safer after school grant that, that statewide.
I know all about that.
Yeah.
So, um, but what is the, um, the match though?
Oh, well, that's some of it would be.
It's, it's, it currently, it would be a forty percent local match, sixty percent ODOT. And that's based on free introduced lunches. So that could always fluctuate depending on how many kids are getting free introduced lunch at both Cedar Ridge Middle School and, uh, Sandy Elementary.
And of the forty percent from local S versus Oregon Trail.
So currently, what we were looking at when we applied for it last time, and by the way, there was ninety six applicants. They funded forty projects. We were ranked forty second. And so when I talked to them at ODOT, they said, reapply with the same grant basically, and you're going to get funded. Under that scenario at that time, I didn't have anything in writing from Oregon Trail for a commitment. They did, they were the ones that applied for the safe routes to school study because it has to be a school district. And then I worked very closely with Julie Monteith and Tim, uh, Bellinger on that project. I think it would necessitate probably Jordan or somebody above myself to reengage with the school district to determine what their funding level would be. And then I think because where it's located, you could also leverage if the council or urban and rural district decided to, some urban and rural funds as well.
Yeah. So in the likelihood that they win that grant, yeah, we could use the funds, the forty percent of the cost, right, would be the match. And then the sixty percent that ends up getting covered by the grant, that money would be freed up in, in our ten to eleven million dollars to, to possibly move to another project. Again, it's, it's about being flexible. We have to reflect what, you know, we know is happening now, but I mean, things change. The day this gets adopted, they'll go into grant, the developer will come in.
Ask a question about.
Oh, of course.
How projects are grouped. So obviously I have, well, if, if we're on the email, I have an interest in the two eleven and Debarco crossing. I think there are at least four different projects that cover that list, two eleven and Debarco. Why are they considered individually and not collectively?
Well, we try to group them based, so we, we try to group them based on the safety, the, and then the main, um, mode that it benefits pedestrian. And then there's the crossing projects, but those are kind of headway next. Uh, and then there's transit and there's, alright, so that's where we try to kind of divide them so we can think about what modes are we funding and group them that way. Um, but the two eleven, obviously they have to be all coordinated as well, right? If one gets reminded, what it means to another and.
Right. So they're not prioritized equally. It came up in every community feedback. So how do they fall off the list?
We'll get there.
No, we can come back to it.
Cause we, yeah, we'll do it. Um, so the projects on this list are, like I said, the safety have shown in purple. The red C projects are for crossings and most of those are safer after school crossing projects. Um, there are also the driving projects are in orange. And then there's one pedestrian project. It's that kind of a royal blue. So I'm going to quickly go through the projects that are on the financial constraint list right now, and then we can talk about if those are right, are they wrong, is anything missing, which obviously the two eleven, the bar will be part of that conversation. So, uh, there's one pedestrian project, um, some sidewalk infill on three sixty second drive, um, from Chinook Street down to Industrial Way. And there was a comment at future fest about the need for some sidewalk infill town. And it's one point five million dollars. There were twelve roadway crossing projects, um, totaling one point eight million dollars total. Those include some ADA ramp improvements on, on highway two eleven, and those are funded. So those, there's no cost coming out of the, the ten to eleven million that we have available. That's funded. We just need to ship them. And then those are the, there's a, a bunch, as you saw, um, safe routes to school projects around Cedar Ridge Middle School and Sandy Elementary School. Anything from signing, striping, new stop signs, curb ramps. Um, some of them have rectangular rapid flashing beacons, more like, you know, um, enhancements for safety. There's a wide variety of things that go with those.
Can I ask a question? You say that those are funded, those two.
No, just the first one.
Just the first one, the highway two eleven?
The, the two eleven ramps.
Not the various safe routes.
Yeah, all the safe routes to school are the one point eight.
So those are funded, are we planning on building them right now? Because in six months, inflation, that number just got smaller.
I do not know the construction schedule for those.
Okay, I just, something to think about right now is everything.
We don't have any sidewalks on two eleven.
There are some sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Remember the jurisdiction transfer there about that identified where the ramps were that we got a hundred million dollars.
We included three safety projects in the financially constrained project list. Um, the first one was installing a, an adaptive signal system on US twenty six from Orient Drive to Reuben Lane. So there currently is one through downtown right now. Um, of course, this is, comes down to how do we make our system more efficient? I think having smart traffic signals that talk to each other. Um, you guys know better than anyone that sometimes traffic through town changes. You guys have seasonal fluctuations um, that aren't always going to be known. You know, your typical Monday through Friday and weekend signal timing isn't going to work on a Saturday when it's a great speed day. Like you guys just know that. So that's a great way to make the signal system much more efficient and it can change, um, in real time and to help to reduce the delays. Uh, that's two hundred thousand. And then we had, um, US twenty six from Ten Eyck Road study. I believe that came as a comment from this group as well. Um, looking just to the north, there's the New Dutch Bros and, and a lot going on, I think with the accesses and queuing that happens at that intersection. So we had included a study to look at that because we're really not sure what the solution should be. And that's such a detailed spot that we'd like to look at it further before we come up with what the recommendations would be for that. Um, and then US twenty sixteen zone study that's come up too, that would be from Ten Eyck and Wolf, um, out to the east Furwood. As you guys know, that's a pretty, there's a lot of safety issues. There's been fatalities. I know there was a motorcycle facility last summer, um, that pops up a lot in our, just our safety data. And we've had a couple of comments about that as well. That is a bit outside our study area, but it's definitely something that affects your community. Um, so we included that, a study for that seventy five thousand dollars so we could work with ODOT and come up with some, some possible safety improvements that way.
These are also probably examples to Council Walker's question about, uh, ODOT, you know, facilities that, who ultimately should be responsible for mandates or if there's joint sharing, or in the case of the adaptive signals, it was, you know, a lobby, it's a deal making that we're able to do with the state to have the fun, you know, the downtown portion of a couple of, uh, verbiage for installing those signals. Um, and you know, that obviously is limited based upon their funding, but, uh, how we can get on their priority list, to get some of these, you know, studies, especially with the, the being a safety issue. I'm sure that these some counselors will be interested in those conversations with ODOT.
Think so.
I would take that even one step further that, you know, for the Ten Eyck Road study. My understanding is that we have eliminated the need, you know, we were letting fourteen units go in past the medical center. We let the medical center go in, you know, they got the Dutch Bros. Now it's, you know, we're, I mean, hearing there's issues there. I know I've driven by it and I know there's issues, but so we've basically put in our planning code that these, when they do these developments, historically, they've had to do traffic studies, as I understand it. And now we don't have to, or they're not required to or something, isn't?
No, that, that's not true.
So when the medical center went in and those fourteen units went in, they don't have to do any kind of traffic study for what's needed?
Um, so what we changed is we made it clear and objective. So in the past, the planning director or the public works director could just say, oh yeah, you had to do a TIA, a traffic impact analysis. You know, those can vary from, I think, like eight to twenty grand. So now it's very specific in the code. If you're not above a certain amount of units, then you just do a traffic letter, not a full blown TIA. And that's what every community in Oregon is moving towards. It's defensible. So a fourteen unit, fourteen unit subdivision wouldn't trigger enough trips to do a full blown TIA, but it would do a traffic letter and look at some preliminary analysis. The one, the one thing to keep in mind is Ten Eyck Road is not a city road.
Right.
That is a county road, although the entire jurisdiction of it, so the city has zero ability at this point to make any really decision-making ability on Ten Eyck Road. We can get like traffic input from, from a developer's, um, traffic console, but ultimately it's the county engineering division that gets to make those decisions. Um, but yes, you, you're kind of correct in the sense that the amount of scrutiny under the traffic studies in some cases has become less. But the, but all development still has to do some level of transportation analysis.
Right. But you know, I think what happens then, you know, when you just, well, it's only fourteen units and it's only, you know, and then incrementally, it's not a big deal. But then we end up paying for it because now we have to go pay for the fifty thousand dollar study to fix it.
They do some later transportation system development charges regardless of size.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. If you have ten trips or less in a peak hour, yeah, you don't have to go look at the operations of intersections offsite. You just look at your driveway and you look at safety and a bunch of other things, but you don't look to see if your, your ten trips likely are not going to make a big difference down the street. But you're right, cumulatively, say like another project comes in and there's five little ones. They do have to include all of those in their background traffic. So it does get, uh, people that leave for future development. It's just not looked after that individual.
And, and they are still doing that, like the transportation engineers, the private transportation engineers that we're working with. Like the two big ones we usually work with are Art Engineering or Lancaster. And they're, they're still doing that, like the cumulative impacts of current planning projects essentially.
Thank you. Okay. So why, related to that last study, you mentioned the Furwood. Where, where are we bringing this study up to Furwood?
I think we select Furwood just because that seems to be the edge of where all the safety concerns are. There's actually quite a few serious.
Well beyond city.
Yeah, understood. But I, I think part of it was.
When we have safety problems in the city.
It was identified as, as a need by several people. I think that's one of the highest crash lengths.
It is. It's a state problem. It's a big state problem.
Yeah, all of that. I think, I think part of the clarity in that though is when we get input, and you're all very familiar, everybody in this room is very familiar with this. People that are outside of city limits either are confused that they don't live in city or not. I get a lot of that, believing with inquiries. But I think the bigger thing is people that are in the surrounding area like Boring, even Eagle Creek up by Cherryville, they believe themselves to be part of the Sandy community.
Sure.
So I think that's where we get comments and feedback, and so we're trying to address that. Now, if you wanted to reduce that area that we're analyzing to maybe calamity Janes or where the dump, you know, the turnoff to the dump is, that's where I'd try to do it. We, we could, we could modify this to become a little bit more restrictive, but I don't think you're going to see a huge cost savings in the analysis.
Urban growth boundary limits, you know, since it's a long-term view.
Yeah. You could do something like that.
Thank you.
I could really use some clarification or I speak because I meant, but you said something about timing the lights and stuff. So what's always been confusing to me is ODOT versus Sandy and who pays the bill? Who gets to make the decisions and who pays the bill? So could you say a little bit about that since we're.
Sure. You mean about the signals specifically or?
Yeah, because, well, I mean, that's just.
Sure.
They make all the decisions. We pay all the bills. Yeah, I know.
And we're kind of two major, like, how do you get over to Eastern Oregon and like, we're fifty percent of that, right?
Totally right.
Eighty-four, seventy.
That's totally right.
So, so US twenty six is under the jurisdiction of this. And we can make, we can put projects in the TSB, we can make a bunch of recommendations, but it's ultimately up to them to decide what happens to their facility. I think over the years they are getting better to listening to communities. And I think having projects like these in your adopted TSB really helps start that conversation and then try to get it to be, you know, a priority in their funding source, right? Cause you guys are competing with every other city in Oregon to get that type of money.
But not every other city has a major.
No, of course. Well, then, yeah. Yeah. Yes, sorry. No, definitely. Um, and I would say ODOT's been very involved, um, now that they're funding this. Um, they have a grant manager that attends all of our meetings. They're also, they have several people on the, on our, um, community advisory committee that are listening and giving input as well. Um, but as far as you pay for things, I think it depends. Like, I don't, I'm gonna say, I don't know if you guys like paying electricity for the signals. Does ODOT pay for all that? I don't know, like the ongoing costs. I have no idea. But if anything's constructed on the highway, ODOT's paying for it and it's theirs. Unless like three sixty second bell and the intersection, I don't know if you guys have a match perhaps with that, but I would say each project would be negotiated depending on if there's any fund sharing. Cause I think in the past, Kelly, the city has not been open to doing any cost sharing with ODOT in the facility, right? And it sounds like that may be changing just.
Yeah. I mean, I'll just be very honest with the people in this room. When we did the two thousand and eleven TSB, there was, there was some pushback from the city. It was right after I started, or it was right before I started working here. Um, for proportional sharing on projects on law on the highway. And my understanding from what kind of happened out of that is, you know, we didn't adopt the alternative mobility standards, which ODOT wanted to be able to fund some of these projects. And because of that, to some degree, ODOT kind of threw up their hands and said, if you're not even going to adopt that minimum thing that we want, we're not really interested in proportionally sharing on projects with you. So I think we've been trying to repair that for at least since I've worked here. And I think it's really going pretty good lately. Like I think they are releasing this as more of a partner. So I think we need to continue, like, people do like to throw it out under the bus and I get it. But I do have to say also with working with them a lot, we do need to see them as a partner if we want to see funding from them. Like we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, I think there's probably two sides to that story, but I will say that, you know, the concerns I have with these prices like two hundred thousand, you know, is that, you know, just a basic sidewalk, as soon as you, you know, as soon, as soon as ODOT is the one funding something, they're calling the two. And all of a sudden, they're two, you know, the, they're looking at some, you know, huge complex, the costs just go out, the out of control, really, honestly. So, and, you know, we could have built it for a tenth of the cost with our standards and they would have been, you know, safe and all that. And so I'm really kind of concerned that when we say we're going to be doing something in partnership with them, and as soon as we, you know, it's their dollar, then they're, then, then we're on, what happens is when they, when those costs come up, then we have to provide those, those consistent or whatever you call. Those consistent or whatever you call that shares, what do you call those collaborative or not?
Proportionate share.
Proportionate share.
Yeah.
That, you know, we weren't planning on because we.
Sure.
So that's a real concern in this whole process whenever it comes to ODOT.
Sure. No, I understand. I work with them.
Yeah.
A lot. Yeah, yeah, ODOT standards are much more.
Lori.
Yeah, just for the sake of time, can we get through the presentation?
I want to make sure you guys all have some context. Uh, so last like, so eight driving projects, seven point five million dollars. So that does. On the financial constraint list is the US twenty six, the three sixty second drive and then the bell extension and that's funded. So that does not come out of the money that we have available. It includes the Debarco Road extension to US twenty six. That would be opposite of this still with drive on the west side. That's three point nine million. It includes the Village Boulevard extension from Cascadian Village Drive to Juniper Street, eight hundred and seventy five thousand for that. Um, it includes the highway to eleven Gunderson Road roundabout um at one point seven million. And then it includes highway two eleven to Barker Road um intersection evaluation, just to study. Uh, for fifty thousand dollars and then one million dollars set aside for continuing planning of the of the bike paths. Alright, so. This is the, the more discussion part is, are these the top priorities? Are there any projects missing? And then if something's missing and we, then we need to find, we gotta knock something off if something comes up, right? Because we still have to stay in that ten to eleven million dollar range for costs. Um, and are we allocating money correctly between the different types of projects? Um, and just to refresh your, so pedestrian projects and crossing projects total for three point three million. Um, safety projects for three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, driving projects for seven point five million. And then when I say bike equals zero, I mean, that's just a bike project. I will be clear, obviously, they're expensive, expensive driving projects. Like all the new collectors, um, the extensions of any roads, of course, those include sidewalks and they include bike lanes. And those are really important connections for both of those systems as well. I just wanted to be clear, we don't have them just standalone bike projects.
I I would also add that ODOT has a pretty major project coming in with additional bike lanes and stuff on twenty six.
Yeah. So that.
So quick question. So in terms of, I I understand there's not a standard one bike thing. Do we need to have any money there in case we want to go after a grant? It's almost all.
No, 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 it's fine. Uh, you guys have a lot of bike projects in your TSB. We just don't have them as as on the financially constrained list. And we're gonna put the 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 small eleven million that we have on something. We don't have any standalone ones, but if you want to go win a grant. It's in your adopted TSB. You can go ahead for sure. Yeah. So, alright.
Well, where are we? Are we to the point for open discussion now?
Okay.
Two eleven.
So, yeah, of course, two levels, but but you you mentioned, what do we take off? Uh, tell, tell me about highway two eleven and Gunderson, one point seven million. Why are we looking at one point seven million there and we're only going to do a piddly little study at two eleven?
Yeah, so I don't think it's going to be one point seven. That's our best. I thi- I think it's going to be more around like, what's that?
That's fifty percent.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be that much. I think it's going to be more around a million, but because of the development agreement that we signed with. The developer of Shaila Meadows, we're contractually, contractually obligated to make improvements of that intersection.
Well done.
And, well, it wasn't me, just so you know, but we're contractually obligated to make.
Prior council. I'm just gonna say, well done prior council.
Yeah, yeah, well, what I will say though is it's gonna probably be about a million dollars.
After fighting against it.
It'll be about a million dollars and five hundred thousand of that was already paid by for the developer. So that, and that is part of the eleven million dollars. So that, that's, that's a contractually obligated agreement intersection improvement that you're gonna have to make. So that, that, and I don't think it's gonna be one point seven million though, based on newer information.
So, let me go off for just a second. I'm gonna shut up and you guys can take my, my input. So two eleven and Debarco, we're talking about an old established section of neighborhood. People on both sides of it, if you, if you haven't physically been there, I encourage you to go and walk down Debarco. When you get to the end, there's no crosswalk, there's no lights, there's a flashing light if you're driving that says you're going too fast and they've got those. Graduated things that are supposed to make you slow down, but the visibility is constrained. And if it's dark, which it quite often is at this time of year when you're walking, and that's a connector between the two sides of Tickle Creek Trail. A lot of times we think of Tickle Creek Trail and we only think of the side, you know, further, further west. But there's a whole section of trail east as well. So you're shaking your head no, because a lot of people don't think about that, but there's another set of trail up there. Off of Wall Street and in that area. And it's all connected via sidewalk with no crossing between that. Coupled with the fact we have accidents there regularly. And so I, I sent a request, what is the safety data? We saw safety pop up in the thing. Uh, when we're looking at things to compare. If we were to combine all of the Debarco two eleven things together, how would they rank? When we look at it from the safety and pedestrian and then connectivity for our trails, it seems like it should be much higher on the list.
So I can say that that's why we have so many and at least do the study, um, because we're, we really don't know what we should be doing there yet. The current TSB has an unfunded project to put a signal around about it. But we know there could be some feasibility issues with that due to the grades. The grades are not very conducive to a roundabout.
They're terrible.
There's lots of concern about stopping at a red light on an icy night and having a truck stuck. Um, just because of the grades. So we really don't know if that's a feasible solution. You know, we know we need to do something and I think the pedestrians crossing right now are the highest priority. I don't think vehicles are. We heard a lot from the community, I want to be able to walk across safely.
That's number one, safety.
Safety, exactly. So the money that we.
On a car, that'll be number two right behind.
Have allocated. Um, for the study is to look at that.
How many years out of the target?
Part of the problem is the two thousand eleven TSB, and correct me if the dollars are wrong, but I think it's like ten million dollars.
Yeah.
So if you do the improvements at that intersection, there goes all your financially constrained money for the whole twenty year projection. So we'd be basically, we'd be basically, no, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is. We'd be tying ourselves to one big project at one intersection instead of spreading the improvements around the community.
I, I still, we have to do some.
Sure.
And fifty, uh, and dedicating money to a study only doesn't do anything. It buys us a report. You know, we don't put money in there for something beyond the report, then we're until our next TSB to get it.
Always, can I add one more thing though? We're, we really did come up with a proportional share for that intersection just in the last few weeks. So future land use applications that affect that intersection, we're going to be requiring additional money above and beyond SDCs. Through work that read it was her creation essentially. And so we, we are going to be collecting money for that intersection separately.
Couple thousand dollars.
And it's like fifteen thousand dollars to begin our trip.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, the first development, I want to say it's.
And yeah, I don't want to speak about that.
Yeah, sorry.
Here and you're going to be hearing about it. You'll see at the staff report that we publish next Monday that. The recommendations for them to be paying a proportional share to that intersection in addition to their SDCs. So I, I just don't want to say anything about that right now. That'll be an upcoming.
When, um, a couple actually questions and and a point. The ten point seven or whatever the financially constrained number is, is based on our existing. Uh, SDCs and our projections on what those questions are over the next twenty years, right?
We take your fees and I know you're going, go for it. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, you know, one of the questions you may ask, well, that's not very, that's not enough money to fund all these priorities, right? So the council does have the, the ability to, okay, we have more unfunded projects that we would like, we'd like to put more projects into that funded category. Increase system wide SDCs is one way to do that. We have, you know, obviously a project to do updating our, our new, our transportation SDCs. Once we have this capital list. I think part of maybe with the intersection improvements, there's a couple of different ways you can do that. Have that on the unfunded list or even put it on the funded list and it, you know, increase your SDCs to try to capture as much funding for that project as possible. I think this is maybe more of the safe way to do it in terms of coming up with an actual project cost and defining what that need is. And that tie the number to it, that makes a little bit more sense than just a placeholder number. Uh, is that maybe kind of the strategy we're approaching this instead of just putting ten billion in there? And then it turns out to be five or fifteen or whatever.
We're trying to be conservative first, right? Uh, and not oversell, but yeah, part of the conversation for future meetings, um, because we are going to be updating the transportation system development charges. Imparently, but this, um, is. How much more can we get if we increase it? And and I can, I will be able to give you guys that number. So if it goes up fifty percent, a hundred percent. All of a sudden, our ten millions, twelve or fifteen, like how, what is your comfort level with increasing the fees? And how much more does that buy you? How much projects do you want?
You'll find mine's very high, but.
Well, that's. That's where that conversation's going. So I want to know what projects you guys really, really want, we can't afford, and those are what we might be able to get to.
So is, how much roughly, since we're throwing one point seven million, which might only be a million, it says that there's a. Big buffer in somebody's number. What would it cost to put flashing lights and like a push button crosswalk there?
I'm, I'm the wrong person to ask.
Oh, just a three lane.
Not a, just for the, you know, you know how you're going. Just crosswalk.
At the intersection, right? Just.
At the intersection of two eleven.
And a full stop or flashers? And I don't, and again, I'm not sure which one is.
So like, on, on Powell, you go down there, there's a lot of crosswalks and some of them, people push the button and start in the, they hit the flashing lights. People are supposed to stop and make them aware that you're standing there. There's no red, green light.
Less than fifty thousand. But I guess part of the study is that may not be enough based on speeds and volumes. And going through the study, we may find that that's not appropriate or safe enough protection. And that we may need like a full signal. I mean, we haven't done that work to know.
The thing that makes me nervous too, because I wa- I walk one world ten. The thing that makes me nervous is with the slope. Even if you put those things that flashed, if a vehicle cannot stop in icy conditions. Then you're basically giving the pedestrian the false sense of, oh, cross now.
Hold on, okay. If it's a red light and that happens, you're gonna get smelt. So if we're walking and.
Yeah.
Conditions, I mean, that's one thing, but we're talking about every day, kids going across, no protection whatsoever.
But we're not, we're not even sure if a red light makes sense there. We're not sure if a roundabout makes sense there. We have to study.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second Kelly's concern because, because again. In icy conditions, that hill is very difficult. You, you have to think about, we have weighted heavy trucks, sometimes with two trailers. Coming down that hill and they can't just stop on a dime. And unfortunately, one of the things that the state has done ver- a very good job of is teaching pedestrians that they always have the right of way. And so my concern in that particular intersection would be someone in that crosswalk who gets hit by a vehicle who can't stop.
Okay, so let's be clear, state law for right of ways, as soon as I put my foot into the path. If I extend my cane or my foot into the, the boundary past the curb and it's kind of undefined there. I now have the right of way legally in the state and cars are required to stop whether they can or not. That's, that's the law, state level oris. So I, I'm with you, Lori. It's, it's a, it's a problem. We don't want to give people false things. My point that I'm trying to make here is we have done nothing and we continue to do nothing and somebody's going to get hurt. And having something that works most of the time is going to be better than nothing that never works. You know, I'm not sure that I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that, Don. I don't agree with that, you know, because I. I think you give people the false sense. I, 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 you know what? This is a, this is a much bigger conversation, I think, than tonight.
Yeah, okay. I'll park.
Well, I'm hoping the study is what we can do to then have this entire conversation. So we're all on the same page of what we want.
Again, these things can come and go, can come in and out.
But I, I believe that I, the, the, the first thing we can do, it's our road now. It's not a highway. And we can reduce the speed limit to twenty five to thirty five. We, we, we don't need forty five at that dangerous intercept. That's the first thing we should do without fifty thousand dollars spent.
And Kelly and I have talked about that. It's a pretty easy process. You just need to ask for a request to ODOT and then we'll do as.
It's a policy question though. We're, we're prioritizing our projects, so let's.
And you, and if you want, I'm just gonna tell you also about, if you want, I do agree with you that one point seven million is way overboarded on that other project. So if you want, we could look at putting five or seven hundred thousand dollars towards the barco.
I would appreciate something.
Yeah, we could look at it.
Well, the proportionate share fees that you guys are going to be.
Yeah, that's.
Also, that's already enough to.
Yeah, I agree.
The first development paying it brings in enough to do something and it doesn't have to come out of the TSB budget.
So we can, we can do something else.
I, I just, just to let, no, I, I think we need to do something that has piece of road, not just that intersection. But the crossing Tickle Creek off to Bornstead has always been one of those really high problems. We know it's a safety issue. I don't want to give anybody a false sense of security. At this point now. People tell their kids, you, you need to be very careful when you cross it. Now, that doesn't mean that there aren't accidents. But there needs to be some sort of logical plan before we start giving somebody a chance to think, well, it's safe, I can cross here. Let's, let's not forget, this has to be figured out. I, I want to see a plan or something.
Well, and beyond that, just a reminder, as much as it's frustrating to wait for studies and all that. It gives us a factual basis when we sit down with ODOT and others to try to get money.
I like where, where Kelly's going with this, cause it's worth some money and let's do the study.
We can put more than the thousand.
Okay, let's look at the river of Mear. From being on the council a long time and then planning commission before, this was one of two projects that we had when I got counsel sixteen years ago. Was the two main things was one of this still loop and one down Bornstead sidewalks. That was one thing. That road did not go down there. It was the second highest ranked. Deadliest intersection in the state at one time. And so ODOT changed that. We're making progress on that. Sometimes progress. I get really frustrated how slow thing goes and government or other things too, right? Uh, but we are making progress and like to see where it pans out to be. Um, because I, I agree with you, the intersection is a mess. I cross it every time when I go run down there and I've almost been, you know, a splat on the road. Uh, but I think we have, um, we, I just want to remind you, we have moved that intersection uh quite a ways uh in the last twenty years.
True, you just, you nailed that comment. We got the run and we got how long on council. I mean.
I know, I got one more meeting.
No. We got how long on council three times, three times, Jeremy. Way to go, buddy.
You, Lori.
I would just add also though that, um, you know. I think it's the safe route to school stuff, all, you know, all. With about almost three million dollars with projects all around the elementary school, all that stuff are really cool, but. When I look at how many people I see walking from highway twenty six down past mining and and over here to Debarco and stuff. That's, I get, that, when I look at your map of projects, that's what concerns me is there's nothing in there um for that.
So missing sidewalks.
Well, I will say, yeah. Same route to school, they're all because of the grants that.
I understand, but like you're, you know, you've got three sixty second going out to Salmon Estates or something, Salmon Creek. Not to say that that's not important, but there's a sidewalk already, at least to Debarco on that side, there are no sidewalks here. And there's a lot more people out here than there are just in Salmon Creek Estates. Not that they're not important too, but, um, yeah, that's.
I thi- I think we could potentially on the Salmon Creek Estates one, look at making it a smaller project. Just so you know, I think.
Kelly, any of the improvements around uh the sandy grade, are, are they also uh consistent with Pleasant Street master plan?
Correct. That's correct. But I, I do, I do think Council Walker's comment on the Salmon Creek Estates is something we could look at more at. Because I do think there's some more safety linkages for the. For the sidewalk that could be done, but I don't think it's necessary to bring it all the way up to industrial way because I think that could be relied on by future development. So I think we can possibly narrow the scope on that one, make it smaller.
Alright, we're getting there.
Rich, do you want to comment?
Kind of. Um, so I have a, I have a couple of thoughts on that. The, the first one is, um, I kind of feel this is a little bit premature of a conversation. Because I'd, I'd really, before we start prioritizing, I'd really like to know what we can pay with SDCs and and changes there. Um, and then the second comment is, I think we would be. I want to use the word foolish because I'm tired, but foolish to leave the grant money for safe routes to school hanging. Uh, I, I realize it might not be the, the highest priority and I think we, but it, it frees, it's free money out there to improve the area.
Are there any other? High price projects for you that?
Didn't capture. And I think, um, this Walker is right in that the my eight tougher. Two eleven is such.
I, I think that whole two eleven, that whole two eleven, um, and, and once we add, we're, we're forgetting too, we're getting ready to build. Our parks can be built over off of Gunderson. And that's, I mean, I can only imagine that people from Bornstead are going to want to cross there to go to that. Um, as well as to connect to the trail on the other side of Melissa. So, um, that'll get a fair amount of traffic. So that whole section right there needs to be redone and reevaluated. Um, those connections are all going to need different crossings and stuff, I think.
No, on behalf of Carl and bringing. No, on behalf of Carl, bring up the one I brought up, I think last time we talked about TSB and it's that intersection on uh twenty six and two eleven, when the trucks are turning left to go onto two eleven, we talked about maybe improving that so that they don't have to take the the side roads. That's a tough left turn for those long trucks. And we talked about maybe adding that somewhere. I'm not saying it should be on the funded side, but I think it should be on the the list.
Yeah, I could talk to, I could talk to Ray and Doc about that outside of this meeting. That
Okay.
That I I agree, it'd be a phenomenal project. I think we'd had to potentially acquire some land from a property, so.
It's trivial, but we're gonna have.
Yeah.
They
Yeah.
They can make the corner. It's just the way that cars are positioning themselves at the stop sign. So it's not as if it's unturnable, not like um
it it depends on their wheel and their their uh where their rear blast axes.
Are you saying the stop bar on mine egg is too close to the intersection potentially?
Yes, people don't follow.
People will follow, yeah, people are parking up.
I have a couple ideas.
I think we can figure that out, but I think it still needs a plan.
Yeah.
And it certainly is cum- cumulatively affects the barco and uh.
So we have a project C six two eleven crocked.
Yeah. That's the intersection.
Our suggestion, project was with restructuring and our project was to put an exclusive left turn lane and a front lane. Capacity thing that we're talking about or are we just talking about more geometrics?
I think geometrics.
Yeah, it has the trucks turning south onto two eleven.
They just need to pull the stop bar.
Yeah, because cars, I believe cars are going too close to the intersection before they're making the left hand turn movement.
That's.
And then the semi or the larger vehicle cannot maneuver around them, I believe is the issue, correct?
Yeah, and that's what's forcing you to go down. They go down the back way, Langin Sand to to Barco. That's causing that side problem.
Yeah, maybe we can redo D six of it.
Yeah.
Okay, the last comment, low hanging fruit, I think we also have this, um, just finishing the si- a sidewalk on bluff between uh Bell and Green Mountain has got, you know, I mean, it's a short stretch, but it's there's no sidewalk there, so you're in the street.
With that qualify for the safe schools.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's a good question. I'd be able to get it in there. I'm not sure.
You know, pride.
I was gonna say some of the money that we could save on a three sixty second to Salmon Creek to potentially be put over there to kind of reallocate some of that one point five billion dollars. And I know there's been talk about um a better crossing at John's Repoint and Bass, so some of that could go there potentially as well. It's really hard to, just so you all know, it's very hard to come up with the list when the needs are here.
Yeah.
And the money is.
Yeah.
And I, and I know you can all appreciate that, everybody in the room, but.
And the diversity of opinion.
Let's.
No diversity of opinion ever.
Yeah, so. But uh, just the the one last thing I do want to say is I think we're gonna be one of the first cities in the state of Oregon. Um, I think this is more common in other states, but to be looking at increasing our SDCs at the tight same time that we're looking to adopt our TSB. And so I think we are gonna be ahead of the game compared to most of our, uh, wouldn't you say that's true?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The sooner you get that adopted.
Yeah.
The sooner you get the chance.
Exactly, so. Well, thank you so much.
Of course.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you, Planning Commission members, everybody. Being at seven forty. All right, I'll go ahead and call the Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
In just to flag the United States.
Streets of America.
Oh, welcome everyone. Uh, for normal, I'll start with a review of tonight's agenda. I will start by calling for any uh proposed changes to the agenda. Although, then go into our public comment. We have not received anything for public comments via online, but we have to submit it uh uh for here. I'll call your names at that time. Well, then go, do we have any response? No, no response to last week's previous um public comments. We'll go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from October seventeenth as well as the school resource officer contract renewal. Well, then for the new business that has the wastewater system facilities plan amendment, we'll wrap up our evening with a report from our city manager as well as our committee and council reports. Jeff, will you call the role, please?
Yes, Council Pete's old.
Here.
Council Smallwood.
Here.
Council Sheldon.
Here.
Council Walker.
Here.
Council Exeter.
Here.
Council Hopings.
Here.
Mayor Fillion.
Here. Is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda?
Um, there, I have a short, a little longer report from the thing the city sent me to during monthly, or excuse me, during this council reports.
Yeah. Yep, I was provided the heads up right before. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and move ahead to the consent agenda. Um, we have, I'm sorry, we have, we're moving to public comment. Uh, we'll move to public comment. Um, a reminder, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Um, Jeff will give you a twenty second warning. First up is Julie Stevens.
What could you get Janet first?
Absolutely, Janet, welcome.
My name is Janet Davis. My address is four zero six zero one Southeast Cubus Road, Sandy, when it's not within the city limits. I'm part of a community action group called Don't Waste the Sandy River. And I'm here to comment on the wastewater treatment plan. First item ten point one, which is new business on tonight's agenda. We think that's really good news. Our group is very pleased to see that there is a plan to explore alternatives to the two thousand nineteen plan, which was developed by Murray Smith. We and other organizations have been advocating for this for about the last three years. Now, we understand this is gonna be a complicated process because there's still a lot of uncertainties with the amount of I and I reduction that will occur and the outcome of the current treatment plants, the upgrades that are being done, planned to be done, but we're hoping for even better news in the future. Second, the Sandy Clean Waters website contains a lot of information and links for those who are interested in this huge project, which demonstrates the city's commitment to being as transparent as possible. However, I have signed up repeatedly for the email list. And in fact, I checked right, we came to this meeting and I appear to be subscribed. I've never gotten one email off of that. So I don't know if I'm doing something wrong or if there's something wrong with the system, but I and I don't even know if anybody else cares about this, but I do a lot and and I would like to be included in the emails that go out. And last, but certainly not least, our group wants to thank the Public Health, the Pub- Public Works staff for all their, this hard, the hard work they've done on this project, especially Jenny Coke.
Great dream.
All right, there's no one you can move in front of you now.
Well, you see, that was very important. I'm Julie Stevens and I live at one, two, nine, three, three Southeast Tonight Road. Neither am I a city resident and um I thank you, Janet, and I just wanted to say ditto what she said. Um, we think that you're doing an excellent job and it's really um heart warming to see the alternatives um looked at again more to have them um better scrutinized. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving ahead in our um agenda, we'll move to our consent agenda that has our city council meeting minutes from our city council meeting on October seventeenth, twenty twenty two as well as our school resource officer contract renewal. Open up for any discussions. If not, we can take a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Council Pete's old and a second by Council Walker to adopt this agenda. All those in favor signify by saying I. My thumbs up. I oppose nades or a thumbs down. Motion carries.
Dan, I'm gonna abstain. I'm gonna abstain. I wasn't there, so.
Oh, okay, an abstention from Council Sheldon. Uh, moving ahead to new business, wastewater system facility plans amendment.
Mayor, please to introduce AJ Thorne, our new assistant public works uh director who I think been here for about a month.
Two months.
Two month, two months, okay, I'm flying. Um, but I believe this is his first item in front of the council. Um, and uh he's gonna do the introduction. We also have Brittany Park uh from Leeway, who's uh joined us virtually as well for this item.
Okay, so I'm here to put forward what to authorize the city manager to approve uh to sign an agreement with KG Kennedy Jenks to complete the wastewater system facility amendment. Uh, I'm gonna turn things over real quick to Brittany Park to give us a quick presentation on the project.
Thank you, AJ. I'm gonna share my screen here. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep. We can see.
We're good to go. Perfect. Yes, hi, everyone. I'm Brittany Park. I'm with Leeway Engineering Solutions. I'm the owner's representative on the Sandy Clean Water Program. I'm here today to present to you on the facility plan amendment. We're in a, in this presentation, the first thing we're gonna go over is a little background. Hopefully, that's mostly review. Um, the second thing is drivers for facility plan amendment. And then the last thing we'll go over is the expected outcomes from that facility plan amendment. So here is a map of the of the Sandy, Oregon. Um, our existing wastewater treatment plant is this black box over on the west side of town. We currently discharge to trickle uh Tickle Creek from November to April. And then we uh reuse our water for recycled water uses from May to October. One thing to mention is our current NPS permit discharge permit only allows us to discharge from November to April to Tickle Creek. We have three main challenges facing us and these are have not changed since the two thousand nineteen facility plan. So the challenge number one is our collection system. Our collection system is composed of aging infrastructure and we have leaky leaky pipes. What that means is when we have um big rainfall events like we had this weekend, um, some of that rainfall is going to enter in to our collection system pipes through these different cracks. And then that excess rainwater or groundwater is gonna go down to the treatment plant for treatment. We do not want to be in the business of treating clean water. It's it's not needed, it's not efficient. Additionally, our our it increases the loading to our treatment plant during those times, because when we had these storm events and there's a lot of rainwater in the pipes, we see these peak well peak flow events at our treatment plant. Our second challenge is um is our treatment. So we have an aging mechanical equipment that needs replacement and expansion at our treatment plant. Um, as the city grows, we need more capacity at our treatment plant. And additionally, those peak um flow events from those storm events I was just speaking of, um, during those peak events, we don't have enough capacity to handle that peak loading. Challenge number three is our affluent discharge. So Tickle Creek is where we discharge in the winter time. Uh, we are mass load limited by a a law called the three basin rule. So there is going to be a time when Sandy's population and therefore the amount of wastewater generated by the the city is uh meets is too large to uh that volume is too much to be able to discharge just at one point into Tickle Creek. Um, we will be limited by our permit. So um, that is the third challenge that we're facing. There's not enough um uh place to F for affluent discharge. In our two thousand nineteen facility plan, we came up with a three stop plan. It's pretty simple. Number one, fix our leaking pipes. Number two, replace and expand the treatment plant. And number three, we were going to build a second outfall and a pipeline to the Sandy River. That was our solution for the the discharge. So and that plan looked like this. We were going to start on NPS permit. We were going to complete co- uh rehabilitation in our collection system in two basins, those those basins being two and eight. And then we're gonna complete immediate needs wastewater treatment plant project. Then after these three first projects were complete, we were going to move on to the next phase of the facility plan. Facility plan laid out this as as the solution. It's one, we were going to create a new east side satellite treatment facility. We're going to build a new outfall pipe to the Sandy River. And three, we were going to build build an outfall into the Sandy River itself. Well, what has changed and what is wrong with that plan? So there's two big thing factors that have changed that have changed that original two thousand nineteen facility plan. So these two factors include, number one is we have reduced more of the uh rainfall um into our collection system. So how we've done that is that we we currently went ahead and we um rehabbed basin two and eight in our collection system. So we sealed up our pipes. So you know, less rainwater and groundwater could get into them. And that's what the facility plan said we would stop. And if we stopped there, uh, it predicts that we'll have peak flows at our treatment plant of fourteen million gallons per day. That's that what that's that MGD, million gallons a day. Well, we've already started working on the next two basins. So we've completed basin two and eight and we've moved on to two more basins, basin six and seven. So what that does is that reduces our peak flow into our collection system even more. So with sealing up even more of the pipes, we're down to es- an estimated eight point, sorry, ten point eight million gallons today a day peak flow to our treatment plant. Obviously, this is a huge reduction in the capacity needs at the treatment plant. And because of that, we have, we have different ways to deal with that capacity. So that's number one. First thing that's changed is the amount of of um of uh peak flows to the treatment plant. The second thing that changed is pricing. So our baseline budget was too low. Our cost estimates and then original two thousand nineteen facility plan were based on two thousand eighteen planning costs. Well, as you know, it's been um a particularly interesting time due to inflation. And so we have seen construction costs increase far faster than we we could have predicted during these um last few two few years. Um, construction, the construction cost intact DAX has increased thirty point two percent between two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty two. So that's a huge amount is not planned for. Additionally, uh, facility plan amendments or facility plans are based on cost test, class five cost estimates, which are negative thirty percent to positive plus a hundred percent costing. So there's a lot of flexibility that could happen in that uh in that costing range. Uh, here's a great example of these changes in costs. So this is our current existing wastewater treatment plant project and you can see the cost budget says or estimates as they went through different phases. We started out with a planning phase cost estimate at three million dollars and then the actual cost to build the project was ten point five million dollars. Um, based on this, we we paused and we decided to look at our cost estimates for phase one B, which is that new facility, that satellite facility, that outfall, that new discharges of Sandy River. And we wanted to make sure those costs um were accurate for the next stage. And we had a hunch they might be low. So we did some research. We reached out to seven different engineering firms and asked for construction costs for facilities like the satellite facility that we had prescribed in the two thousand nineteen uh two thousand nineteen facility plan. We collected, they had twenty different um different current sites and construction that were similar to the technology that we're planning on using at our satellite facility. And so we used those twenty cost estimates and normalized them to uh the project here at Sandy to get a realistic updated value of how much that satellite, um, this treatment facility was actually gonna cost us. And so from the facility plan, it had an estimate of eighteen million dollars for just that portion of the project. And from looking at all these customer estimates, we're seeing new prices up at like fifty six million dollars. So our hunch was correct. Um, we're seeing um uh increase in costs that current that weren't originally in that original facility plan. So what are we expecting from this facility plan amendment? Uh, back to our map of our program. Uh, there's a lot of moving parts and very complex. So we already have the things in black boxes, the NPS permitting, the collection system rehabilitation at basin two and eight and immediate needs wastewater treatment plant plant projects. Those things are already in in uh in the works there. We're working on them now. The collection system, we have a basin two and eight is actually complete. Uh, this next phase um in the purple boxes is um is is uh where we want to reevaluate. Um, so additionally, this collection system rehabilitation on basin six and seven, that's what we added. So we've added another project that wasn't originally in the plan. And we think when we we look at this facility plan amendment, we're kind of, we have a hunch that we can value engineer based on the capacity needs that we know we need based on this extra rehabilitation work. Uh, we have a hunch that we won't actually need this treatment, satellite treatment facility, and we could expand our existing treatment plant. We have a hunch that we won't actually need this treatment satellite treatment facility and we could expand our existing treatment plant and that will help us value engineer. Our facility plan. Additionally, the original facility plan had a lot of solutions for like meeting the long term needs of the city of Sandy, so like 10 plus years. The projects that were put in that plan are are take many years to develop and the build. One of the issues there is that the city of Sandy needs more capacity now, we need solutions now. And so we are able in this facility plan amendment to kind of piece it out into two different sections. How can we meet our our needs now and how can we meet our long term needs, so providing solutions to both different scenarios? The expected outcome is from the facility plan amendment is that one. We're going to have a more affordable wastewater system expansion. And this, when I say more affordable, we're still going to meet those three original challenges that we we have prescribed, we're still going to fix our leaky pipes. We're going to expand our treatment plant and we're looking at different alternatives from Tickle Creek. When I say we're looking at different alternatives, that's not only Sandy River but other alternatives as well. And then we will have more certainty on our treatment capacity needs. We are currently doing. Rainfall, I mean, sorry, collection system monitoring modeling, monitoring. And this will give us more exact data on what is our capacity need at the treatment plant, what are exactly our peaks at the treatment plant now that we've done all this. Rehab work in our collection system, so we're going to have more certainty on that, we're going to be able to feed our facility plan amendment based on that that. Modeling and that extra addition additional data. Third, we're going to be able to address near term and long term capital improvement needs, so in that in the last slide. And then last is we're going to be able to document the amendment plan for for program funding. To get funding for this program, we need to submit a approved plan by the council to get a lot of this funding, so being able to have that plan, say this is what we're doing and be able to submit it to these different funding sources is going to be able to help us obtain that that funding. So there is the high level overview of the facility plan amendment and I thought I would like to open it up for questions.
Thank you, any questions? See no questions. Thank you very much for the presentation.
I just want to say.
You're welcome.
Okay, I I'm really excited about looking at these alternatives, Carl and I have both been meeting with these guys and. It's been nice to see the conversation slowly broaden from very very Sandy River focused to looking at other things, including additional. Irrigation opportunities, groundwater insertion and other things, some of them may may not materialize in the timeframes we're looking for. Obviously, a key part of this is to continue to work on the NPDs permitting. Even though it's not an option I personally like, it's such a long timeframe that you can't. You can't stop the process, you'd set yourself back a decade, so so things will continue, but but I'm glad we're looking at.
I think I would add is that we do need to figure out something immediately. And I think this particular strategy will give us that best possibility of doing it, we have to go full speed on taking care of the next few basins, going through the entire basin actually. I think that's crucial to get those things done, but we also have a a wastewater. A storm drain plan that needs to be looked at as well, we have to start looking at how to deal with our storm water and. That's probably one of those next few items that are coming down the road that we'll have to take a look at. And SDCs.
Again, thank you, Brittany, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you again, Brittany. So if I could go through the rest of the staff real quick, Brittany covered most of it, so I'll try to keep this as high level as possible. For the gist of it, we're looking to develop more economical solutions to meet the city's wastewater permit compliance requirements. Low background, as Brittany said, Sandy's outgrown its decades old wastewater system and DEQ and EPA have stepped in. To require us to improve our infrastructure. Back in 2019, we adopted the existing facilities plan to address the challenges and this is currently the Clean Waters Program. So as we began implementing phase one of the facilities plan, as Brittany said, we saw the costs were increasing greatly. And needed to take a look at the phase one B, which included the NBR. As a result of these concerns, video is working to develop a facilities plan amendment with revised CIP for near term and long term wastewater solutions that meet our regulatory requirements or remaining financially feasible for the city and our payers. We sent out an RFP at the beginning of June this year. At the end of June, we received two responses, these responses were ranked by members of the city, Leeway Engineering, Veolia. Kennedy Jenks was ranked as the highest firm. Was ranked highest. The contract with Kenny Jenks will complete a facility plan amendment and develop more economical solution to meet the city's permit compliance requirements. Additionally, the facility plan amendment will address compliance issues during the shoulder season of May and October when discharge to Tickle Creek is prohibited and irrigation is not needed and our storage ponds are full with our partners. The facility plan will also incorporate validated the RDAI collection systems projects to conform confirm peak flows as well as the results of the stress testing completed this next spring. The facility plan amendment will also prepare an updated capital improvement program of projects based on the system's needs. So I would like to recommend that we authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Kenny Jenks to complete a wastewater facility plan amendment. The total cost for this project is 502,841,000 dollars, which will be funded by the ARPA grant system, the American Rescue Plan Act. So we'll have no impact on the city's wastewater rate. Thank you.
Right. I entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Kennedy Jenks for professional services to complete a wastewater treatment system facilities plan amendment. And to the amount of and I'm going to assert not to exceed 502,841,000 dollars.
Let's see a second from Council Hope. Been a motion by Council Exter, second by Council Hokinson, all those in favor signify by saying I, give me a thumbs up. Oppose nays or a thumbs down. Motion carries, thank you, appreciate it, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Yeah. Moving ahead, Jordan, I report for the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, following up on wastewater. I think everybody's wondering how we did with the rainfall. I want I want this to be. Watch, so I like this to be validated first, but the the email and the information that we got today from Veolia is that. The peaking factor is only at 3.7 MGD, which is almost hard to believe.
That's really low.
With rainfall. Over the last week at six inches and and then three, three inches since Friday, oh no, four inches since Friday and in basin eight, I think is what we saw. That.
That's crazy.
It is crazy.
How did the rainfall system, the measuring system work, did that?
The gauges were great, the flow monitoring were great too, so.
I know it's fun, they just got a bunch of waters.
This is more dated than I've ever had.
Yeah, so really good news. Kudos to Veolia, Oxbow, you know, Veolia had the plant working. Slayton, of course, is is doing the two implant improvements. Of course, and Leeway for their oversight and Jenny and her team and everybody involved. Like I said, this is just fresh data, of course, we'll we'll see it play out as it continues to rain and everything, but. Compared to similar storms last year, that's quite a shaving of the peak flows coming in, so fingers crossed this good news holds, but. That would be fantastic and the the fact that the EQ basin didn't even fill, they even diverted any flow means the plant was running pretty well. So things are looking looking much improved. Switching over to water on the flip side, challenges with storms like this, you may have seen that Portland had to. Move over to their groundwater supply, that does affect us, believe it or not, because we do get about half a million gallons of water from the city of Portland currently with their inner tie. So turbidity does affect us and it affects our treatment plant as well. So Alder Creek does get impacted by these events when there's a lot of that mud flow that comes in on these storm events, so there was a moment this weekend where it got a little bit concerning with our treatment plant able to. Process the water and and stay with demand. All this to say, our in our investment into our drinking water system, it's very, very important for resiliency purposes for these exact reasons and by building new inner tie to the filtration plant will be able to. Continue to get, you know, the water supply from Bull Run, because they'll be able to filter using a filtration system with the plant, the the sun water away and then we're rebuilding, going to rebuild our Alder Creek plant as well. So. You know, it's 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 kind of nerve wracking, but we're, we got a plan together to to address this.
So with our current situation with Bull Run, where we run our cap, when they switch over to groundwaters, that means we're cut off.
We are cut off from Bull Run.
With the new system, once we take the new contract, we'll have access to their groundwater.
They can send it this way. Yeah.
Switched back as well as as much.
Right, right.
Both sides, yeah.
I wanted to mention the police chief is not here and Lieutenant Lundry, they're both attending the Oregon Association of Chiefs. For the Small Agencies Conference this week and reason I'm bringing this up is chief is actually presenting. Tomorrow on small cities and recruitment and retention of employees because we are seen as a shining star for small communities and small agencies for being able to recruit applicants and retain. A police force that's currently fully staffed, so proud of that and good luck to chief in his his presentation tomorrow. And then the bit of business tonight for you is the board and commission interview panels, I think we have four. Boards that we're looking to fill positions, I think we're still recruiting for a couple of those. The Budget Committee, Library, Sandy Net, Economic Development, I get those right?
No, not Sandy, Transit.
Transit, sorry, Transit. I think we have a mix between incumbents that have reapplied and then new applications, but. So I'm kind of throwing it on the council that come up with the interview panel, I think the practice has been using, you know, chairs and then delays ons and then other members.
So start with each one, just go down the list.
Budget Committee, we have one applicant so far.
Yeah, we should probably.
Yeah, I think we want to keep that open, we have some time, so library.
See, we need a interview panel for library member, so Kathleen. Yeah, yeah, Kathleen and then Catherine, do you remember who's joined you in the past?
I think it was just the four, I we would talk maybe it was.
Was I? I might have done. You want, yeah, we, I can do it again, okay.
What we've done recently is we've had three counselors, it doesn't have to be three, what we've done recently is we've had three counselors.
Why do I feel like though I do remember the library was different?
It was Kathleen standing on.
Know what it was? Oh, okay, you you in, you in again? You shouldn't have spoken half rich.
Almost had it out.
All right, cool.
It was all Zoom.
Yeah. Wish I'd love to personally, I'd love to maintain that format for these.
Yeah.
Transit, it'll be up to those numbers though.
Transit advisory board.
Well, I I'll do, I'll do that.
Okay.
All right, great, Lori. Cool, yep, Carl.
Okay, and then economic development.
Economic development. Jeremy, obviously.
Again, yeah.
And also stepping off, so yeah, well, I'm going to talk to you about that, one of us talked you on that, man. And then. I'll go meet, let's go meet Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe it's for that one. Three of these, hold on, just incoming.
Because we talked about, I like to talk about that, because we were talking about changing the number.
Yeah.
Because that was just, yeah, let's talk about that.
Cool, all right, thank you, done.
Hey, I just want to do a shout out to Lori and the the Sandy Fire who helped rescue my dad yesterday. Some of you guys don't know, but I, my wife's parents and my parents have moved to Sandy and live in the city of them itself. It's a, it's an interesting time when your parents get a little older and and start having issues, so anyway. How heads up to them. With your permission, Mayor, can I take three minutes to four minutes to just present something that's been near and dear to me, it's taken a couple of years for me to actually get it in paper and write it down, but. Has to do with outdoor burning and some changes I'd like to see us consider. I'm going to give you a little my perspective on it and then I'm going to ask if council has any feeling on it to send me an email or no, you know, so that I can try to help put something together. I know staff is really busy and I'm kind of trying to, this is in my mind, this is a minor change and I don't want to take a a lot of staff time, but our current outdoor burning ordinance. Contained in our code basically allows for neighborhood burning of brush and yard debris within city limits on any lot size greater than a quarter acre, that's it. Your quarter acre is bigger, you can burn, there's no real restrictions on that other than what the Sandy Fire District puts out, so it's a burn day. You know, and so forth. You can't burn trash, you can't burn other things, but you. As far as the where that's placed on your quarter acre lot or. More details like, so in my neighborhood, we have one lot that fits within the size and the rest of us are all small, so one one lot middle of the area. And they burn twice a year and it doesn't never fails, but whatever day they pick, it's a temperature inversion, the smoke goes throughout the entire neighborhood. The impact on this is really we're creating an unhealthy situation. The the need for neighborhood burning for lots of the size that we're talking about has gone away since that ordinance was passed a long time ago, we have. Spring and fall cleanups that people could take advantage of, it's free, we have the chipper that's available free. The need just isn't there anymore and the negative impact on health and everything else in the community just to me just doesn't warrant allowing it on lots of this size. And and in particularly, you know, they can put it right in the corner of a lot relatively close. Provided that it's safe and but that might be close to your backyard or you might have a kid with asthma or CFPD or anything else. So I'd like to see us restrict that option. There are, I will also point out, this is an area of code that was written a long time ago and it's also has some unclear items, in fact, you read it literally. You could see it as restricting your use of your trigger, you could see it as restricting a lot of other things, you know, if you're doing a hot mop. Roof, you can see it as as restricted the way it's worded, so we could clean it up, I think, to be more. Or straightforward, but I'm looking for feedback and opinions as to whether. People are adamantly against this or supportive, supportive, restricting it within the city limits or supporting it on lots of a certain size and smaller. But I'd like to see us at least eliminate it for the majority of our highly urban areas. So I'll send some thoughts to you, it's an email, just send me back your comments and I'll try to put something together and bring it to council and another agenda.
Great, thank you for it, thank you. That's my report, cool. Carl.
Got a question and then a short little pity there. I saw the stuff that came from Alita Court with all the water coming down off the new, how how is that being looked at or what's our response to that?
Yeah, go. Response isn't complete yet, I'm digging into that, I have a feeler out to Ray Moore to get the stormwater report regarding that facility. So once I get that, we have a chance to read through it, I'll get back to him, I've slated for tomorrow or the next day.
Could we be CC'd on that as well?
Oh, definitely.
Thank you.
They clean up the great.
Looking at it, everything appears to be working properly, but I'd like to dig into it a little bit more before I say anymore.
Thanks, okay, then real quickly, and I want to go through this fairly quickly because the very end is probably the most important part, but. The city did pay for well over a hundred dollars, we'll go down and take a look at the Home Builders Association's. Report on what the forecasting was for housing and some of the structures that are. Looks like it's going to happen the next few months. They had two, maybe put them up on. I'll say next. Also in control there, they had a couple of economists, one was a local guy who was. The legislature looks at very carefully, which by the way will be something to think about as we go through this and the other one was a national economist. And it was very interesting, the national guy was pretty pessimistic. Felt like there was going to be a lot of impacts in the next few months and the local guy. Felt like there was going to be a lot of impacts in the next few months and the local guy, PhD by the name of Josh Lender, who was Oregon's economist, and that's what the legislature looks to and his organization. When they talk about what they want to do for forecasting, how they spend money. So that's number two. We move along. Okay. There and that's the guy's name. So if you ever wanted to look at his stuff, he is online or he has this presentation online too. So go to number three. The construction in Oregon is kind of followed along with a lot of what not only in Oregon, but in Portland, it's just been amazingly dropped off, you know, in and about the two thousand nineteen and has not really recovered whatsoever. In fact, the data is showing that the last couple of years that it's actually dropped even more from the little rise. So not only are we seeming the benefit of some of the things with our sewer issues, but it looks like we have some help with the way the construction is going on. And it seems that it's mostly caused by interest rates, which people probably would assume that's pretty good as a problem that seems to be working on it. The other thing is, is there's about 10,000 jobs in the Portland metro area that we are not filling to do construction work. And actually I have heard recently that layoffs are expected because everybody is assuming that the recession is coming here in the next short period of time out of here. So the number six four. And at the same time, there looks, it looks like there'll be a lot of growth in population for housing. However, you want to look at that as one of the, whether it's conservative or pessimistic, but there's a lot of growth. It's like it's coming our direction. They expect lower interest rates in the next year or so when the recession does hit, hits. And there'll be some strong labor regrowth. Once they see a lot of housings and jobs starting to be demanded, but right now that's not the case. And the next one. Can't really see that one very well, but that was one of the few that they didn't put into the slideshow and was one of those conclusions that I thought was really interesting. I'll just describe them really quickly. The things that are going to create more housing and less expensive housing. So we're talking about affordability. We're talking about homeless, all those things that we have been talking about the last few years, about how do we solve that thing? This is what Mr. Dr. Leonard's prescription would be. First off, increased land availability. That's kind of obvious one. I would think that we need to have more housing property to be able to build houses on. Next one is to turn land from non-buildable to buildable. His suggestion here was some of the zoning that's happening. Things that would prevent us from building in places. I think he's talking about some of the density issues that come up. Which by the way, his statement was that somewhere around forty to fifty percent of our legislators will be turning over this time, including the governor, the governor, all of whom seem to be very interested in more legislation on housing. A wonderful, that sounds like. And another thing was a lot more units per lot, which was part of that legislative issue that's coming down the road. And I know we've had some conversations about that. At least stabilize development costs. This comes back to things like what is it going to cost us to build our developments? And how that looks like even to things like S T Cs permits fees and all the rest there. And then lastly, which I thought was really interesting, he was saying that there's between four and 500 people lacking in our planning staffs on our cities. But we will need to find a way to hire more planning staff to respond to this growth that supposedly will happen. They all both said recession is coming. And that will happen in two thousand twenty-three, they said. The argument was how soon we would respond back and get out of that. So some, the war going guy said end of twenty-three and the national guy said he wasn't willing to make the recommendation. So thank you for sending me that and I.
Thank you, Carl.
I'm thrilled to hear that news about how well the things worked over there. I think that would be, you know, as soon as you can confirm those numbers, it'd be great to kind of send out an email, make sure Danic gets it. And just send out an email or some, you know, kind of something for everybody to let them know. You know, I think that's also good news also for the folks, you know, concerned about the moratorium and all too. So on the library update on a topic is that they are having, having Jordan and the Hoodland folks, Hoodland Library District folks meet with Gary at the county to discuss possible options to take their rent for the building that they own up there or not own, that they rent up there to not have to use their operations budget to pay for the rent up there. They want the county to go ahead and pay for that. Outside of that, they would also like to, I went to the Clackamas County dinner that we had. That was very, very interesting. And a lot of fun toward the, the new Milwaukee library and it is awesome. It's just gorgeous. They there's been some money given to Happy Valley and I believe Gladstone, some deals were cut just recently to give those libraries that some, some millions of dollars, some, in some cases are the funding to get their libraries built and Hoodland feels like they're kind of the you know, left out of the, out in the cold that they don't, they're the only other library in the county that did not get any of that kind of or just so they are looking to have a meeting with Gary at the county and to try to maybe make some alterations to that. So good luck with your meeting there.
Yeah, I did give Gary a heads up. There's also a meeting in December that the county has asked city managers to attend and be with Gary about the county budget situation. It's too.
Yeah, there's, yeah, the county that was trying to kind of, you know, they're supposed to be paying for that overall data, you know, when we do the L I N N C, if you guys are, get your books online and things like that. They're wanting to cut that back and the bottom line problem that we have with our library district is that when, when they passed the district and the funding mechanism, they never programmed in any kind of increase, annual increase. And so of course we've got, you know, huge increases in pers and all that other stuff every year. And so now, you know, we just have to kind of keep, you know, reducing our, our, what we can deliver every year to cover those increased costs. Or we have to subsidize it from the city tax pay list. So that's kind of the biggest issue. So they are pushing to try to kind of address, maybe have to go out with a, you know, I don't think it's a good time, but eventually consider going out with something that allows that increased funding. Go anywhere, but. Thank you very much.
Rich.
Yeah, excuse me. Just two things real quick. First of all, I have noticed some camps popping up around in the city area. I just want to make sure that we're enforcing our, our ordinance to statute because it doesn't seem that's the case. So I just want to put that on your radar. The second thing is I went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting the other day at the Nap Farm and I just wanted to give John praise. I know he, he was out promoting those, the Christmas lights that are going to be at Mynek Park. And I just really, he did a very good job of promoting it to the, to the businesses as well as, I think the way that they're doing it is different and unique and more progressive than I've seen in the past. So that was really encouraging to see. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Rich. Lori.
Yeah, thanks, Rich, because I was going to bring up a couple of those camps as well. Trick or treat trail, trail, if I can talk. Huge success. I don't know how many kids there were, but it seemed like it was very, very well attended. I know we handed out tons of candy, so a super cool event, but it brought to my attention Jordan, some of the, some of the bump outs that ODOT's working on, especially on Proctor is they're, they've taken away all of the pedestrian access to the sidewalks and forcing people out into the road. This is a little concerning. So maybe, I don't know. I don't know how close they are to being done with that project, but maybe we could kind of take a look at that. So like the one specifically in front of no place, there's nowhere for people to walk and they actually have to walk out into traffic to get around it. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you, Lori.
Great. Yeah, thanks, Steph. I, Nathan Lindquist emailed or got in contact with me over the weekend about the water. I know you're going to get back to us on that. Appreciate bringing that up earlier, but just a little concerning what happens in just a matter of a year's period of time and it, something's not working right and I appreciate the staff. But I was the one that suggested to him that to email the staff members and all of us so that we can be all on the same page. So anyways, I thought that was the most appropriate way to handle that. And just a nice guy, just wanted to know who to talk to. The city wants to work things out. The, as you know, we had a little windstorm and I'll go on with my run that I was running around town on, came across several of these trees out there. So just want to make sure that people are aware of the chipper. I know that we have it, but I don't know who knows that, right? And some of these trees are pretty big. I also saw on social media, I don't post there, but I might read a couple of items that come up there about who to contact over the weekend. You know, when trees are blown down, oh, this is a city street tree, but this is that. And it's amazing what residents will help educate other residents on that may not be factual, but just what they, they believe is true. But if there is some type of way to communicate in storm events like that, some information or, or how to get ahold of people. I did have a resident reach out to me today about sometimes wondering when we were all going to come back to work in the city, be in the offices or answering the phones, because sometimes they've gotten calls saying, oh, I don't work on Fridays, call me back on Monday. And so when we have events or something like that, you know, on Thursday at three o'clock and that person may not be available. So not sure how we can talk later, but making sure that we have the customer service all five days a week. More from home and that type of thing, but being able to be present on that. So I explained about ten day, ten hour workdays and things like that, but, but I also get it too, you know, like they don't know who, who's working what or who, or maybe they can contact someone else while they're out of the office during our normal business operations. So and then just want to say, you know, the sidewalk to Vista Loop has been a long time coming, right? I mean, so here I'll get this one for you, Lori. Ever since I've been on planning and on city council, it's been a top row. But it's just been amazing to see kids walking up and down and people walking it down. I know some people live up in Vista Loop and the whole junior high football team, I guess, one night came home after school one time and all walked up and down that sidewalk and and one kid wanted to be the first one to go down when it opened it up, ride his bike to school and back, you know. So this really does change the livability for our residents, for our kids and the safety of what we wanted. I know it's been a long time. We've been watching it being built for a long time, but also that. So it does have real impact, even though it costs a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of strain from us, but people's lives are positively affected by it. So anyway, that's all I have.
Great. For me, just Halloween. Halloween's a really cool part of living in Sandy and a big part because of the team members that we have at, at the city. An opportunity to walk around with our family and from the library services to our police to, you know, our different C departments and how they partake. It's awesome. And what would love to have seen C Hall open for that. I know that we have staff shortages, but it is important for us to be taking part in those community events as a participant on Main Street. And the kids were walking around the neighborhood safe, right? I saw that the police were out and about that evening on Halloween night. Everybody felt safe. Just thank you to everybody. As we get into the holiday season, just a couple of reminders as we get into Thanksgiving, Sandy Community Action Center really starts to step out with a lot of their programming. They do their Thanksgiving family boxes out of there. So if you know a family in need or you want to participate, please get in touch with the Action Center. They do what's my favorite Thanksgiving annual event where I get up way too early, participate in the, the trot, that, that, what is that? Turkey trot where we always start ahead of the Pete's old, watch the Pete's old family pass us. When we turn around before the end, go get a donut. Usually we make it back before the end, but sometimes they usually beat us even though we cheat. But it's a great annual tradition there. And then of course, as we get into the, the Christmas holiday, the, the community is just incredibly excited about what our Parks and Rec department's doing with the Christmas lighting and stuff in my day. Just thank you to our volunteers and community organization and our, our team members at Parks and Rec for making that happen. It's going to be a really incredibly, and a lot of people are looking forward to Public Works Department as well for working that. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.